Good evening. I hereby call Palm Springs regular city council meeting of February 24th, 2022 to order. I would like to invite you to stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. City clerk, could you conduct the roll call, please?
Councilmember Holstage.
Here.
Councilmember Coors.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Mayor Protim Gardner.
Here.
Mayor Middleton.
Present.
All councils present. Thank you.
All right. We are going to get started with a few presentations and first I would like to begin with the representative from Acushur, the new arena in the Coachella Valley, and invite him to talk about all things ice hockey.
Hello.
Good evening.
Evening. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Can you guys see that? All right, I will go ahead and begin. So Acushur Arena is coming to town. You're building a state-of-the-facility. We are on schedule to open late 2022.
Arturo, you're not...
Yes?
We cannot see the presentation. There we go. Now we're getting it.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. I think Arturo's connection's pretty bad.
Yeah, I think it is. I am actually on the road because I am headed to Village Fest.
Yeah, Arturo, I think we may need to reschedule this for another day.
Okay, I will go ahead and do that then. Sorry about that.
Thank you, and we look forward to hearing about it.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll be on the next one for sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Then we will move forward and the next presentation will be our regular COVID presentation. And for that, I'd like to invite Daniel DeSomes to step forward.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Let me share my screen. Hopefully, it actually works this time. It looks like it's working this time.
Great.
So tonight, I just want to share a quick update on our COVID data, which has seen good improvement over the past two weeks since we talked on the 10th. Here's the six metrics that the state and county are tracking. As you can see, all of them continue to show improvement. When you look at the case rates for both the state and the county per 100,000, the state and county are both averaging 30 and 29 respectively. So that daily case rate has continued to go down as well as hospitalization rates and ICU rates have seen significant improvement. Thirty percent reduction in hospitalizations and 25% over 25% increase in ICU bed space. So things are continuing to improve. I just want to remind Council that as we start to see this progress, the improvements are going to be less dramatic as we finally settle into that new normal as we did last spring. So Riverside County saw cases nearly half week over week. So last week's reporting was actually eight days because of Monday's holiday. So that halving is actually probably better than half. And then next week we'll have six days of reporting. So the numbers for this week and next week will look a little bit off, but significant improvement overall. On average, the county's seeing about 600 cases per day. Just for reference, a couple of weeks ago, we were still seeing 2,000 cases per day. So significant improvement. Here in the city, we saw 12% reduction in new cases week over week. All of the city data appears to be in a similar place to where we were back in early October. So we're doing really well. And if we compare what we're at right now to the state and county per 100,000 residents, like I said, they're both somewhere right around 30 cases per 100,000 per day. The city is at 19. So we're actually seeing about nine cases per day. So when you do the math to 100,000 population ratio, we're still far better than the state and the county. The Coachella Valley, again, seeing significant improvements. There were a couple of cities that did see a little bit of a blip. I call it that because the numbers that increased, one of the cities saw an increase of eight cases as a change. So that's not a significant enough number to be concerning, especially since we're seeing such drastic improvements. Our wastewater treatment plant data also continues to see improvement. So the trend line kind of obscures where the data points actually sit. If you look at the bottom right screen where the blue dots actually are, it's actually sits below the trend line and we'll look closer at that on the next slide. Our viral load continues to plummet really rapidly. If you look on the bottom right, you can see, you know, last Tuesday, we only had 95,000 count for our viral load compared to, you know, almost seven million middle of last month. So we're seeing very dramatic improvement. So all of our metrics are looking promising. And then a comparison from this year to last year, you know, I said, our numbers are starting to look the same as they were back in October. Our viral load in the wastewater treatment data is sitting about where we were last spring as we started to fall to some of our lowest numbers. And here's what GT Molecular is estimating our case count to be. Again, this is last week. We saw more improvement this week. So last Tuesday, they estimated we had 550 cases of COVID in Palm Springs. So that's residents and anybody else that is using our wastewater. And if you look back in the middle of January, that was up around 40,000. So very significant improvements over all of the metrics. We finally sorted out that backlog of data and things are looking really the same as they were as we entered into last spring. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
And Mayor, if I could quickly, as you know, Council gave direction, last meeting and delegated authority to the city manager, that's me, to lift restrictions when the data suggested it was appropriate to do so and outlined a handful of those indicators. So we've seen those indicators met at this point. We've had consecutive week over week decline of transmission. We've had also a significant relative drop when you look at the previous high. We've also seen significant improvement in hospitalization. So we are prepared at this point to declare that as of next Monday, we will lift our local restrictions and realign with the state moving forward.
Mr. Clifton, I think that's very encouraging news to an awful lot of people. Council, questions, comments for either Danny or for Mr. Clifton? All right. Well, Danny, thank you. And what we know is this virus continues to mutate. So it stays in this direction. Our next presentation is also a COVID presentation and this virus has killed many people, including numerous friends and neighbors. Last count, 150 people in Palm Springs. And I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Protim Gardner for a reading of the COVID-19 Memorial Day proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the first Monday in March has been designated as COVID-19 Victims and Survivors Memorial Day. And whereas COVID-19, an illness caused by a virus that can transmit from person to person, has spread across the world, creating a global pandemic that is having catastrophic effects on human life, our community, and our economy. And whereas local and state governments, health departments, and public servants have taken bold actions to protect residents, supporting struggling local economies, and find innovative ways to provide services. And whereas in response to rapid spread of COVID-19 and past stay-at-home orders, essential workers stepped up to provide critical services to help protect our communities and save lives, sacrificing their own health and safety. And whereas COVID-19 has had a disproportionate impact on low-income communities and communities of color, exacerbating inequities already prevalent in our systems that we must address as a nation. And whereas public health guidance and policies targeted at prevention, such as social distancing, wearing masks in public, and staying home, help mitigate the spread of COVID-19, prevent illness, and lessen the burden on individuals and societies. And whereas the symptoms and severity of COVID-19 can vary dramatically by individual and the long-term health implications for survivors is largely unknown, as many survivors suffer with lingering side effects of the disease long after they no longer test positive. And whereas more than 5.9 million people worldwide and 941,000 in the United States have lost their lives due to COVID-19, and in Palm Springs alone, 150 lives have been lost to this deadly virus. And whereas each life lost to COVID-19 mattered and leaves a hole in the hearts of loved ones, family members, and the surrounding community. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of Palm Springs, California, hereby proclaims the first Monday in March as COVID-19 Memorial Day in remembrance of those who have lost their lives and in honor of those who are forever marked by COVID and continue to suffer from the impact of this virus.
Thank you. Our next presentation is a proclamation for our esteemed city clerk, Anthony Mejia, who is moving on to a new assignment. Whereas Anthony Mejia has dutifully served as city clerk since December 4, 2017. Whereas in twenty eighteen, Anthony was instrumental in the creation of a city council district-based electoral system, which involved the strategic coordination of over thirty-five public engagement workshops, hearings, and California Voting Rights Act Working Group meetings. And whereas in twenty twenty, in the midst of the novel corona coronavirus pandemic, Anthony enthusiastically embraced the challenges to ensure residents were afforded the opportunity to be heard by their elected officials in a new virtual setting, working tirelessly to maintain a constant flow of communication and uninterrupted services. And whereas Anthony has utilized over eighteen years of municipal clerk experience to serve the residents of Palm Springs and support city council efforts towards greater transparency, diversity, and inclusion through the implementation of translation and interpretation services. Whereas Anthony is greatly appreciated at City Hall for his helpful nature and attention to detail, his dedication to the professional development of his staff and clerks across the state is a reflection of the selfless attitude and passion he holds toward democracy and good governance. Whereas Anthony is respected by s- so many for his incredible dedication to the Palm Springs community. Thank you, Anthony, for being a proud representative of the city and the embodiment of its commitment to excellent and responsive public service. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Palm Springs, California, by the power vested in us with deep appreciation of its service, do hereby proclaim February twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, Anthony Mahia Day. Anthony, would you like to say, uh?
I'll be really brief. Um, I didn't want to be on camera the whole time because I'd be doing nothing but crying. Uh, it's been a real honor to be serving this council for the last four years. Um, you know, my first week was such an honor. It was to swear in three new council members. It create the first California all LGBT City Council. Um, and then to meet Grace Gardner through the CVR Working Group. This has been an incredible honor. Um, the past four years have been nothing but exciting um, and and full of new opportunities. Um, and I've had the amazing opportunity to work with great professionals, department heads, uh, up and down the organization. But most importantly is my my team. Uh, whether it was Terry Milton and Cindy Bararty or my new team of Tiffany, Brent, Sabrina, and Monique. Uh, everybody is amazing in this city, and it's just been an honor to uh work with you. Thank you.
Anthony, thank you. Uh, our next presentation uh is going to be a remembrance for uh, someone we recently lost who uh was such a treasure to our community, and for that I call on Councilmember Jeff Coors.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Middleton. And uh, I'll ask that we, uh, when we adjourn tonight, we do it in memory of uh Charles Dunn. I want to share a little bit about Charles, who um many of us knew and were friends with, given his work in City Hall as well as uh throughout so many uh parts of our community. So Charles moved to Palm Springs in nineteen ninety-two and opened the Desert Institute of Travel. Two thousand and three, he started an ancestry business called Your Family Name, a popular store in downtown Palm Springs. He later became involved with the Walk of Stars program through his friendship with celebrities, including his dear friend Carol Channing. Charles is a warm and loving man who enjoyed meeting new people in retirement. He also drove for Uber and occasionally filled in at the front desk at Palm Springs City Hall. And Charles was much loved here in City Hall, and his smile and ever-present good cheer was an inspiration to all. In twenty seventeen, City Manager David Reddy nominated Charles to receive the prestigious County of Riverside Senior Inspiration Award, representing the city of Palm Springs, and Charles was proud to accept that honor. He was born on July twenty-third, nineteen forty-four, in Winfield, Louisiana. After running a statewide typing contest, Charles moved to Washington, DC as a teenager. Through a friend whose uncle was a US Senator, Charles Dunn worked in the Speaker's Office in the US House of Representatives before being assigned to the Kennedy White House at the outset of the Cuban Missile Crisis. At his desk located outside the Oval Office, Dunn helped with many of JFK's speeches, including President's Address that he was to deliver in Dallas on November twenty-second, nineteen sixty-three. During his days in the White House, he befriended Jacqueline Kennedy's Social Secretary, Tish Baldridge, who introduced him to the First Lady. As Jackie was emptying her office after Dallas, she gave him a painting that Charles proudly displayed on his wall in Palm Springs for many years. After after President Kennedy's assassination, Charles worked for President Lyndon Johnson before being transferred to the Pentagon. Drafted into the military in nineteen sixty-five, he served in Texas until nineteen sixty-seven. Afterwards, he used a GI Bill to enroll at Oregon State University, graduating nineteen seventy-two. He campaigned unsuccessfully for seat in the Oregon State House in nineteen seventy-two and taught high school from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen eighty-three. Charles Dunn was truly remarkable man who had a special role in presidential history of the uh Kennedy Administration. And we, as of Palm Springs, are proud to have known him and uh miss him. Uh, and just thank him for all he did for so many in our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Uh, the last presentation is going to be a statement that uh I am going to read. I'm very proud to be the mayor of the city of Palm Springs. We're an imperfect but unique city, and for generations we have been a place of refuge and renewal. It is in that spirit of our city and our history that I must say something this evening. On Tuesday, Texas Governor Greg Abbott issued a directive to state agencies to investigate and prosecute the parents of transgender children and their healthcare givers. He has labeled the parents of transgender children who support their children on their journey to be the best and whole person that they can be to be child abusers. Texas District Attorneys are uncertain or of mixed opinion of what the new directives mean, but there are reports of parents already who are supportive of their transgender children who are fearful that they could have their children removed from their homes and placed in foster care. The University Transgender Health Center in metropolitan Dallas has closed. Please try to understand what it means to be the parent of a transgender child. Please imagine the tears throughout the family as your child told you their truth, their most difficult, essential, and personal truth. A truth like anything you had ever known. You had a choice. Can I and do I stand with my child? You made the choice to stand up for your child, to give your child the best opportunity to be the best person they could be. And the governor of the state of Texas wants to prosecute you for standing up for your child. The governor of the state of Texas wants to turn your neighbors into his enforcement arm. Please try to imagine what it is like for the mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, and grandparents of a transgender child tonight in the state of Texas. Can you imagine the heartache, the questions of what we do? Can we do? What should we do? What will the state of Texas do and where will we go? Now, try to imagine the transgender child in that family and what their heart is telling them as they watched every person they love in agony and anger. Family comes first. It is not an idle statement. It is what we all know. But no matter what else is before us, if we have to choose, we choose family. Well, if not in Texas, in Palm Springs, we stand with transgender children and their families. I know all of the stories. I know all of the explanations. I have lived this life. We are who we are. You cannot change a child into someone they are not. But what you can do and what this will do is break their spirit. I know I am today a transgender woman. But while I have always been and will always be transgender, I have never had the opportunity to be a transgender child because I wasn't brave enough to come out. I wasn't brave like the transgender children in Texas or Florida or South Dakota or Missouri are like those here in California. They and their parents have shown bravery and courage that is unimaginable to me when I was their age. And they've done so in face of dangerous and discriminatory attacks. I am in awe of transgender children and their parents that I meet. Spend ten minutes with them, any one of them, and you will be as well. I have, from the city of Palm Springs, a message to transgender children and their families everywhere. You are loved, you are supported, you are respected, and you will always have a home in the city of Palm Springs. You will always have a home in California. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the agenda. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The City Council will discuss the order of the agenda and may amend the order, add urgency items. No abstentions or no votes. Are consider calendar items or request consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion? I would like to make a motion for the acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items that staff or a council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion or vote? Seeing none. I I would like to uh make motion that we uh uh, continue item five C, the appeal of the Historic Site Preservation Board uh, decision regarding the removal of uh the statue in front of City Hall. Is there a second for that motion? Seeing no second, the motion fails. Report a closed session. I would like to request the City Attorney Ballinger provide a report of closed session. Thank you.
Yes, uh, yes, Madam uh Mayor, members of the uh City Council, members of the public. The City Council met earlier to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda. Uh, the City Council did not discuss the labor negotiations, uh, and there was no public action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public testimony. This is public testimony on non-public hearing agenda items only. The next this time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You will be asked to begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of public hearing and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. Tonight, the city clerk will be contacting speakers by telephone. Mr. Mahia?
Bill Rutan, you are live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments. You may begin now. Mr. Rutan, are you there?
Yes, I am.
You may begin.
Yes, I am Bill Rutan, a US Army veteran and homeowner in Palm Springs for the past twenty-seven years. In addition to the harm that the noise and concussion of fireworks causes wildlife, including bighorn sheep and our own pets, I wish to discuss post-traumatic stress disorder among veterans, PTSD. Although I do not suffer from PTSD, I was subjected to mortar attack during my tour of duty in Vietnam. And I can tell you that the experience was terrifying. Please bear in mind that fireworks are, in fact, an explosion of gunpowder. In the descriptions that I have read, any explosive detonation can be a PTSD-triggering event, especially if they are unexpected. Thus, I urge the city to eliminate or absolutely minimize the granting of permits for fireworks displays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Amato Salinas, you are live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments. You may begin now.
Thank you. I want to point out and put the city uh, council members on notice and the attorney that in two thousand and twelve, the Frank Bogart statue was on property when the City Council voted that that area for the city of Palm Springs is going to be a historic preservation site. So I'm putting them on notice that now that they full know that that it's a federal, state, and city code that they're violating by pushing this through. So I don't know you, I guess, Coors and um Christie are going to leave and leave a big financial mess for us residents here and the future city councils. That is terrible. They need to go ahead and realize we have laws, we have codes, and they purposely have directed the nonprofits to go ahead and write uh comments to help them remove the statue, them meaning the city council, which is wrong. Majority of the residents here in Palm Springs want it, they love it. He was a giant of a man, a giant of a mayor, and a wonderful person. And these individuals that have come into the city have no knowledge whatsoever of this man, and yet they vote to go ahead and try to get his statue away for whatever cause they may or may not have. Currently, they need to follow the law. The city attorney has been put on notice. So what are we going to do to those that leave us that mess? Can they be held accountable, financially accountable for their actions? I think they should be. They should not be able to go ahead and use the system, start up the mess, and leave this financial burden for the city. Furthermore, we can't go ahead and pay for out of us our monies, any reparations for individuals that never loaned any and never owned any land in section forty-one. That's ridiculous. That was a tribal issue and not a city issue on that part. So I think the City Council and the members really need to reevaluate, put this aside, and let the city attorney, city manager uh, go ahead and review the policies and procedures that are currently in place that protect and preserve that area. Again, my name is Amato Salinas. I've been here since nineteen sixty-two or sixty, I forget. I'm old. So thank you.
Lauren Laberan, you are live with the City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Mayor Middleton, Mayor Protem Garner, council members and staff. My name is Lauren Laberan, and I'm a concerned resident of Palm Springs. I would like to urge you to cease allowing fireworks in the city of Palm Springs. Fireworks are a tradition that does much harm and should not be continued for the sake of the South. There are excellent alternatives. Many of us with pets know firsthand how traumatic and terrifying fireworks are for our pets. Powerful fireworks came in sounds over one hundred and ninety decibels and are louder than gunshots in some jet planes. Experts estimate the loud sounds, mainly fireworks and thunderstorms, make up one-fifth of all companion animal disappearances, which is evidenced by the high number of lost and stray pet intakes our public shelters experience every July fourth, including our Palm Springs shelter. Wildlife species are also traumatized by fireworks. Birds can become so frightened and disoriented that they leave their roost and fly into trees, poles, cars, and other objects, becoming severely injured or dying. Bighorn sheep, rabbits, coyotes, and other wildlife who call Palm Springs home are traumatized every time there's a fireworks display in our community. We have a collective responsibility to protect these species too. Fireworks can also trigger PTSD in individuals who are victims of gun violence or are brave soldiers who have served in combat. This is also well documented. It is time to move away from toxic, dangerous, and traumatizing entertainment to healthier, safe, safer locations. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Don Mills, you are live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments. You may begin now.
Thank you. This is Don Mills, addressing five C, reading with permission my husband Chris Mills' letter. Dear Mayor and Council, having served as Dear mayor and council, having served as a Palm Springs city council member from 2001 to 2017, I was present at the February fifteenth, 2012 council meeting where the city hall site in its entirety was approved as a city Class I historic property. I have recently heard and read that the Bogart statue was deemed not a part of this designation. Simply not true. It was certainly a part of the conversation and considered a part of the site during the deliberation. How anyone could assume it was not a part of the site when we reviewed over and over the definition of site is beyond me. It was stated, "Site included everything bound by the existing property lands of City Hall," that simple. I was the sole dissenting vote that evening in that I felt it was also important to allow future flexibility in landscaping, parking, and circulation, including potential relocation of the Bogart statue. Whether I agree with the removal or relocation is not an issue with regard to this appeal. The fact that anyone, including city staff, could ascertain it was not a part of the site at the February twelfth, 2012 meeting vote is uninformed and totally ignorant of the proceedings that night. If you wish to relocate the statue, you should amend the Class I designation, as only the council can do. Relying on the HSPB to make a determination as to whether the statue was part of the designation is not their responsibility when it was perfectly clear on the 2012 designation that it was part of the site, the same as every tree, shrub, light fixture, and piece of concrete or asphalt within the boundaries of City Hall. I'd like to add that the staff report referring to Bogart statue as "non-significant equivalent to a sprinkler head" shows an obvious bias of the city staff regarding this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. David Weiner, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments.
Regarding this issue, thank you.
David Weiner, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much. Good evening, city council, madam mayor, madam mayor pro temp. I think, you know, I've been involved with this effort along with a lot of other community members for a while. People say that I'm just a tourist, even though I've been a homeowner and resident of Palm Springs for seventeen years. And I'm just going to say, first of all, I want to applaud the city staff for their report and the diligence that they put into it, and also the consultant's report that was used in reaching the decision to issue the certificate of appropriateness to move the statue. I think it goes without saying that the consultants feel that, as many people do, the statue itself is not part of City Hall. And to be honest, I find it offensive that people consider it part of City Hall. City Hall was built in the fifties and sixties. The statue is added, I think it was three decades later. And we need to own up as residents and the heirs of Palm Springs, I guess you'd say, to what happened and how we do need to make things right in the best way that we can. And I think moving this statue to a place on of, not directly in front of City Hall, is part of that effort. For those people that say that the statue is part of City Hall and must stay there because it's a historical site, I would say that by that same measure, you know, you just replaced the charging stations behind City Hall in the parking lot of City Hall that is on City Hall property, and I think we need to reconsider the removal or the replacement of those parking chargers and put the old set chargers back. Obviously, that's an absurd, spurious argument, just as is the argument for not moving the statue to a different place. Thank you so much for your time.
Stephanie Martin? Can you mute your TV? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did. Sorry.
Thank you. You are live with the city council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Well, thank you. Yes, I'd like to speak on issue 5C. My name is Stephanie Martin with Quantum Consultations of Desert Hot Springs. Now, even considering any appeal for what is such a weak offering in the first place toward a restorative justice effort surrounding the removal, or I guess relocation, of the Frank Bogart statue in front of the city hall in Palm Springs, is just complete denial, sheer utter denial. The racial inequalities and equity gaps found in the wavering on removing a person who didn't think twice prior to removing so many hardworking people and their families in the most cruel and permanent way possible can be witnessed today, and we need to do something about this. That's really equitable here. To burn down and destroy homes in the summer was a dirty play by Mr. Bogart as a mayor that needs to be rectified beyond the removal of, or relocation of such a painful symbolic reminder in the form of a statue. To many, it is a shocking reminder when they go to do business with Palm Springs, that when the rest of the nation was fighting for civil rights, the mayor of Palm Springs at the time was acting in the opposite of these interests. I call for restorative justice and the permanent removal of the Frank Bogart statue from City Hall property, and ask to consider even, you know, eye for eye, tooth for the tooth, melting and burning that statue down, a symbol of the consequences of bigoted racist actions and shaky legacies gotten through unacceptable means. And as far, as far as the higher speaker this evening, I believe his name was Amato Salinas, it's not Section 41, it's Section 14. And it's, it's a lot of those properties, you can see the destruction today. You can take a tour. There was a recent tour. It's Black History, Black Excellence Month, and we need to really honor the true roots and the legacies around here locally. I even want to see a Lawrence Crossley statue in front of the city hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Rossi, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Dear Mayor Middleton, Mayor Pro temp Gardner, and city council members, please let me introduce myself. I'm Dan Rossi. I'm the newly appointed executive director of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter, and I'm here to bright comment on the fireworks situation. As you all know, this is a situation that has come up prior to the council back in May and also in September. I'm here to give my comment to really express our opposition to firework display permits that are provided. We understand that there are a way to honor our veterans and things like that. We are okay with permits twice a year to happen for Fourth of July and Veterans Day as well. We're asking that it be limited only to that. The recent materials that were given related to the research of the air quality is excellent, but please do not forget the impact that this also has on our domestic and wild animals. I can tell you that in the animal shelter, we see an uptick of stray animals that come in the day after fireworks displays happen. Animals get so fearful, they break out of their backyards, their houses, and become strays, they get hit by cars, and they get displaced from their owners. It puts a taxing situation on the shelter, let alone the families that have to deal with this. Animals have to be medicated in their homes from the fear of the fireworks displays as well, as well as the impact it has in the animal shelter as well. So please take this situation seriously. We also need better action when it comes to backyard fireworks as well, which are illegal in the Palm Springs area as well, and having those enforced. I thank you for letting me talk to this topic, and I'm more than willing to discuss it further if that is needed.
Thank you. David Christian, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Middleton and city council members. My name is David Christian. I'm a fifty-two-year resident of Palm Springs. And to this day, and despite city officials claiming to run a transparent government, the authors of the HRC's defamatory and dishonest report are still unknown. The city and the HRC have refused to disclose the report's authorship despite numerous requests by friends of Frank Bogart. I ask you again today, and in the interest of transparency, to please disclose the authors of this report. It's caused so much divisiveness in our community. This fallacious report's been discredited by friends of Frank Bogart in a lengthy and extensively researched rebuttal. The resolution to adopt the report was voted down by this council. This is clearly a politically motivated attack on the former mayor, and a public records request revealed communication between city officials that showed that a former city council member and a national political organization were involved in the production of the HRC's report. Even one of the HRC's own commissioners courageously spoke out against the political motivation, saying that the report gave the appearance of character assassination tactics to achieve a political goal. The, the report and the city's efforts to remove the statue have been highly offensive to the indigenous Haukakaliyente tribe as well. Their prominent members of the tribal council, of tribal chairman, rather, that have called the report disgusting and slanderous and asked the city to remove their family's names from the report. And finally, this city staff report and certificate of approval in regards to the HSPB issue is a clear violation of the 2010 action by the city council protecting that statue. It's just one more example of the botched, disingenuous, and non-transparent process to remove it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Scott Williams, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. My name is Scott Williams. You know, I've been a resident of this valley since almost birth. I was born and, almost born and raised here. You know, and I've never, never really felt that, that statue needed to come down, that's for sure. But I just wanted to make sure that the HSPV violated the terms and the protection previously granted to the Frank Bogart statue, and the HSPV should reconsider their decision. Therefore, the city council should not go forward with the reconsideration of the HSPV. You know, I, I just don't, I don't understand it. You know, it's a huge part of our history here in this town, and, you know, if we, if we, we can look at it good or bad, but we need to remember it and learn from it and continue forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Evans, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the city council and staff. My name's Doug Evans. I woke up this morning quite early, and I took a look at the newspaper, and the headline had to do with the city council's concerns about COD and transparency. The Human Rights Commission report is an absolute classic case of non-transparent government. It was prepared by people. There's references to executive committee meetings that have not been able to be documented by staff or anybody. A government report that has no authors should be removed from the public record. That said, I'd like to call your attention to Section One, Section, Section 805.010 of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, and it states, "For the purpose of preserving areas and specific buildings in the city which reflect elements of its cultural, social, economic, political, architectural, and archaeological history." Clearly, when the city council considers the history of Palm Springs, there is more to preservation than just bricks and mortar. The city council clearly added the Bogart statue to the Class I designation in 2012. The statue is the most, of the most famous mayor in Palm Springs history. It was created by a world-class artist. It is a significant piece of the history and the time and the political environment of Palm Springs, whether it's viewed positive or negative. The statue is not a sprinkler head. It's insulting to have it referenced that way or compared to a sprinkler head in the staff report. ARG in its report chooses its very, his words very carefully. As of January twenty, January 2022, the statue has not been evaluated for eligibility as a historic resource.
Mr. Evans, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gloria Thompson, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments.
Mr. Evans is still talking.
There is a little delay online. You may begin. Gloria Thompson?
Yes, thank you for having me. I'm Gloria Thompson with Palm Springs Section 14 Advisory Board. And I would like to speak on regarding the Frank Bogart statue.
You may begin.
I, I heard that the Historical Society was appealing the decision to remove that statue. And I disapprove, and I approve of the removal of the statue. It really doesn't have any valuable history as far as I'm concerned, except for the things that he did to our people on the reservation. That's all I know about him, and I would like to know of any suggestion where it was going to be moved, because I was at a meeting with the Historical Society, and they wanted to move it downtown across the street from Lost Insulin. That's just insult to injury. So I would like, any appeals to be denied on moving the statue, and especially moving it downstairs. Another thing, I heard someone comment about, they have been here since nineteen sixty-two, and they agree with having a statue, and that's because they don't know the history of what this man did. They don't really know, they didn't see the houses burning like I did and being bulldozed. So no, I do not honor that man, and I don't think anyone in my community does. So remove the statue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jerry Holland, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments.
Yes, thank you so much. Greetings to everyone, mayor, city council people. My name is Gary Holland, and I am a Section 14 survivor from the reservation back off in the sixties. I just want to say that, you know, that, you know, as I was a child during this time, and when everything was going on, I was totally unaware, but I do remember a lot of things that went on at that period, how people were scuffling and scrabbling and moving about to try and rectify or understand what was happening. I do remember that we're talking about, we're talking about what went on with Section 14. I, I remember the time that, when people were scrabbling around, trying to figure out a place where they would go and where they were going to do later on as their homes were being torn down, you know? Even though we did not own the land, the Indians, they represented us, and we represented them. the Indians, they represented us and we represented them. You know, there were hard times between the two, the two nations or the two races. I didn't understand. I think it was, to me, it was like fun times because as we were stacking on top of each other, trying to figure out where we were gonna stay and people were, you know, running here and there. We, we all looked out for each other. And
Mr. Holland, your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bobby Gray, you are live at the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Can I start now?
Yes, you may begin.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Bobby Gray. I am a lifelong resident of the Coachella Valley and would like to comment regarding my support of the Frank Bogart statue. I'd like to start by saying the Section 14 fiasco was not caused by Frank Bogart. Mr. Bogart assisted the landowners who were the members of the Agua Caliente Band of Queeia Indians and the Bureau of Indian Affairs. Two Agua Caliente families, those of former Chairman Richard Malanovich and former Chairman Pete Seva submitted comments to the city council addressing their lifelong friendship with Frank Bogart. Former Vice Chairman, Chairwoman of the Tribal Council, Barbara Gonzalez Lyons described the benefits of the city and private working together to help the tribe become financially independent. Former Tribal Chairman Richard Malanovich described Frank Bogart as the city's first luminary. Former Mayor Ron Oden became a friend of Frank Bogart during his decade of being on the city council and mayor and would not want that he raised any issues or say any concern regarding the statue being removed. I believe Frank Bogart to be worthy of a place of honor in the history of this wonderful city and urge the council to support the preservation of his memory. Thank you very much for your considerations.
Thank you. Susan Smith, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments. You may begin now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Middleton and council members. I sent a letter today that I hope you'll read. I'll just briefly go over my points. I think that the Mayor Bogart memorial sculpture needs to stay where it is at City Hall. The man helped incorporate this city in 1938. He devoted 75 years of his life towards this city to create what it is today between the airport, the convention center, and so many other major developments. He was focused and he got things accomplished. And he was a friend to all people. He was married to a Latino. His widow still lives in Palm Springs. And his first wife, who died from cancer, is Jewish. So for those who say that he was a bigot or racist, that's entirely false. And the fact is that we can live with one another with both new and old. Take, for example, the El Meridor Hotel Tower. The hospital built an annex and several annexes that are quite modern. Yet we preserve the El Meridor Tower. The Old Desert Museum at Takwitz and Indian was, featured the Cornelia White House at the corner of Indian and Takwitz. And that was moved to the Village Green. So that was preserved. There are many examples of preserved sites in Palm Springs. And there's no reason at all to remove Frank Bogart's sculpture there. The reparation situation, we're reminded that 351 families of white, families of two or more, as compared to 115 people of color, were situated on the tribal land dirt.
Thank you, Susan, your, your time is up. Brad Ward, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments and you may begin now.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Brad Ward. I'm a coach and consultant in Palm Springs. On Veterans Day, was the first incident of fireworks after our dog began to show signs of anxiety. I was unaware there were fireworks happening at all, let alone that there, that our house was so close to the location that they would be exploding in our window practically. The entire time the fireworks occurred, I was sitting with a dog who decompensated further and further with each explosion. I couldn't comfort him, nor could I protect him from what was going on outside. As I sat with him, my mind turned to human beings. And as a, as a trauma-informed certified coach, I'm trained to recognize and respond to human trauma within the scope of my practice. And knowing how this, how debilitating trauma can be for some people, it compels me to oppose fireworks sponsored by the city of Palm Springs. Post-traumatic stress injury, also known as post-traumatic stress disorder, responses are involuntary. Veterans, people who have lived through war and people who have survived gun violence, may carry traumatic responses for years, even after they work through it. Because of the extreme noise, bright flash, and rapid succession of fireworks, people who have had, who have autism or other diagnoses of neurodiversity can experience overwhelm in a fireworks display, putting them into a state that may be dangerous and debilitating for their health. Consider, if it were you, what adverse reaction, and you had an adverse reaction to something that was optional, what would you want your city to do? For the sake of respecting and honoring the humanity of those who suffer from the effects of fireworks, I urge you to ban fireworks in the city of Palm Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue LaFever, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you for this opportunity. Good evening, council members. My name is Susan LaFever. I've been in the desert since 1968, went to high school here. And even though I spent most of my time in the east end of the valley, I absolutely saw what Frank Bogart did to the west end of the valley. There wouldn't be a Palm Springs without him. I've heard the testimony of other of our members or locals who have commented, and I agree wholeheartedly. So now I just want to kind of give some credence also to other, you know, some technical reasons why the statue should remain, other than the fact that he is an historical figure that deserves a spot in our community. I would like to see that the council, I would respectfully request that they issue a continuance on the appeal of the HSPB certificate of approval or remove the item from the agenda altogether. And the reason is that the staff report on this matter is incomplete. It does not address the concerns brought up by the Historical Society back in November. That it attempts, the staff report attempts to limit the scope of the certification in order to ensure a certain outcome. So despite the Historical Society asking the city staff to do so, the certification, the certification of approval does not assess the value of the statue as an historical artifact. So in short, I would like the appeal letter from Mr. Pacheco as stated, that it, it needs to be fixed before it is removed. He's undeniably, Frank Bogart, an historical figure of great importance to this community. And no man has done more to put the little village of Palm Springs on the international map. So please, city council, conduct a fair and transparent process that doesn't skew a certain outcome. Please objectively evaluate the value of this statue as requested. Please continue the appeal and direct staff to prepare a historic resource evaluation on the statue, its renowned artist, and on Mayor Frank Bogart himself. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Norm King, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments and you may begin.
Thank you. I'm Norm King and a friend of Frank. First, Frank Bogart was not in any sense a racist. The attempt to discredit Frank Bogart's reputation based on the city's involvement in Section 14 belies the historical record. The city would never have gotten involved in Section 14 if the Tribal Council, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, and the County Health Department had not requested and urged the city's assistance. The city council apparently wants to pretend that such historical record does not exist. Secondly, I respect our city staff and it hurts me to have to say the following. The Preservation Board's direction to staff made at their November meeting has not been honored and the staff has misrepresented the ARG consultant report. Specifically, in November, the board directed the staff to initiate an Historic Resources Assessment Report, quote, "to provide further information about the historic significance of City Hall site and the Bogart statue." This was not done. The ARG consultant report states, quote, "The statue has not been evaluated for eligibility as a historic resource." This study does not, still continuing the quote, "does not evaluate the Bogart statue under any eligible criteria." In spite of this, the staff report states, "The report concluded that the Bogart statue statue does not contribute to the historic significance of City Hall." This statement is a blatant fabrication of a text of the consultant report that the city paid for. Furthermore, the city report states, quote, "The statue was not mentioned in the city council resolutions that designated City Hall as a historic Class One site." This is not true. It is clear that the 2012 resolution amended the historic designation to include the structures, features, and the land that includes the entire Takwitz Canyon frontage, excepting only the landscape plant materials. The 2012 resolution also states that "all existing previously approved or installed alterations or improvements should be considered acceptable and consistent with the requirements for Class One status." This information was not provided to the board. All of the above demonstrates that the Bogart statue, contrary to the staff effort to rewrite history, is included in the Class One designation. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Steve Braff, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments and you may begin.
Thank you, Mayor Middleton and the council, for this opportunity to speak on Five C. An urge that we keep Frank Bogart's statue at City Hall. I'm a 19-year resident of Palm Springs. We all know in Palm Springs that modernism is king. But from our, from our earliest days, prior to City Hall, through the sixties, it was Spanish architecture with a rustic Western theme. That was what was most popular. The equestrian lifestyle was the thing. Movie stars came to the desert to swim and sunbathe, play tennis and ride horses. They participated in one of the biggest events of the day, the Desert Circus and the Desert Circus Parade. They proudly rode their horses down Palm Canyon Drive. The stars loved it, the crowds loved it. You can see their joy in the old photos. There were western stores on Palm Canyon, barbecues, hayrides and trail rides that the rich and famous enjoyed, side by side with the locals. And of course, Frank Bogart. Has our Preservation Board forgotten? Or are they choosing to ignore our past? Mid-century modern homes were once considered so passe, you could hardly give away an Alexander House. Fashions change. Our history does not. The Frank Bogart statue is both a tribute to the man and an important reminder of what old Palm Springs once was, a town where residents and tourists alike loved and enjoyed our Western theme. I urge our leaders to please reconsider their support for all things modern and be responsible stewards of the whole of our city's long and rich history. The Frank Bogart statue deserves historic preservation where it stands in front of City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie Holland, you are live at the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments and you may begin.
Okay, thank you. Hi, this is Marjorie Holland. I'm calling on behalf of Desert Hauling Gateway Wellness Committee and Palm Springs Section 14 Survivors. This statue is offensive to many people. People who have played and continue to play major roles in making Palm Springs, California, the world-class resort that it is. Take it down. Store it. Figure out a less offensive location in the same manner meetings, debates, discussions that we're doing now, if such a location exists. Having a new home should not delay the statue's removal. It has been concluded that the statue's removal does not affect City Hall's value as a historical monument. Wherever it ends up, it will be offensive to some. Thank you.
Jana Hayes, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to begin or to give your comments and you may begin.
Okay, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jana Hayes. I'm a retired Marine Corps veteran and a volunteer at the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. I am calling to lend my voice to the continuing debate over fireworks displays by the city and permitted events. Last year, to my knowledge, it was determined that a compromise had been reached, that fireworks were to be sanctioned for two major holidays, the Fourth of July and Veterans Day. Now we are considering that other events be permitted to have a fireworks display. None of the objections to fireworks have abated. They remain a hazard to the public and in specific to veterans, especially those among our homeless population, many of whom suffer from PTSD. In addition, the harm to pets and wildlife are well documented and are as relevant today as they were a year ago. To broaden fireworks displays to other events besides the two mentioned above is not in the best interest of the city and actually tarnishes our reputation as a forward-thinking and humane place to live. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Benny Mayfield, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments and you may begin.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ben Mayfield, graduate of Palm Springs High School, 1971. I grew up in Palm Springs since 1954 and left Palm Springs after college in the desert. Concerning Mr. Bogart, bad behavior shouldn't be and cannot be awarded or tolerated. There's probably some great things that Mayor Bogart did and there were some pretty bad things that he did. Now concerning the statue, yes, it should be removed from City Hall. Now, we speak of equestrians. I heard a gentleman talk about the horses, the parades and so forth. I used to ride horses at the Spokes Street Stables on the weekends. I think there were five-dollar horse rides at that time. I think that would be a good location for the statue over at the stables. It shouldn't be where Palm Springs, I'm looking, matter of fact, I did it today. It says Palm Springs have 1.6 million people per year visiting Palm Springs. Right now, they probably don't see the statue. It's out at City Hall. So why would one want to move it in the center of Palm Springs where then they would see the statue on a daily basis? That's pretty much what I have to say. And there's going to be a lot of rhetoric, how great he was. But at the same time, for my people, he was not great. Thank you and I appreciate the call. Thank you.
Thank you. Tristan Milanovic, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments and you may begin.
Good evening, city council. This is Tristan Milanovic, daughter of the late Tribal Chairman, Richard Milanovic. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Milanovic family alone. We are extremely disappointed on the council's continued discussions of the removal of Mayor Frank Bogart's statue at the entrance of City Hall. As I've stated numerous times in the past, Frank was not a racist man. My father's incredible admiration for Frank and their deep, long-lasting friendship was a testament to that. Additionally, it must be stated how disgusted the family is that the city council is still considering a letter from a commission that has continued to use my father's name even after the request of removal from the tribe and the family themselves. We do not wish to be a part of a movement of pandering and virtue signaling. Your efforts of political correctness have proven to be false as you allow a deceased Native American man's name, my father's name, to be dragged through the mud, all for the sake of your agenda. And even more, as you said, upon my ancestors' stolen land, my family's stolen land. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Julie Buhler, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments and you may begin.
Thank you so much. My name is Julie Buhler. And I was, I have to say, I spent decades My name is Julie Bueller, and I was, I have to say, I spent decades as an award-winning sports journalist, with actually more than a decade here locally in the Coachella Valley in radio, television, and print. In fact, I'm really proud to say that because of our community, I got to be the first woman in California history to host prime-time sports talk radio. That's the kind of glass ceiling shattering only possible with outstanding community support, and that's why I know what's possible when this community, you on the council and the community around us, throw our support behind a cause. And that's why I'm asking you to do so tonight for our beloved Palm Springs Power Baseball Organization. The most incredible thing I got to witness in all those years of sports broadcasting was the numerous times the powerful and galvanizing effect of sports can have on a community. The profound life lessons learned on a baseball diamond have impacted world leaders, presidents, shaped generations, and today still mold young minds in a way few other cultural institutions can. And that is why I strongly support the Palm Springs Power Baseball Team. They are vital to our community, and the annual fireworks show is a rare opportunity for those previously maybe uninterested in baseball to enjoy the historic Palm Springs Stadium and connect to their community in a new, wonderful way. And I'm sure we can all recognize that is an invaluable gift to enriching a life. So I implore you all and strongly urge anyone hoping to unite and mend our community to throw your full weight and force behind supporting the Palm Springs Power Baseball Organization and reinstate the annual fireworks show at Palm Springs Stadium to celebrate the Fourth of July. Celebrate baseball, America, and this phenomenal community. Thank you so much for your attention to this matter.
Delia Ruiz, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Delia Ruiz. I was born in Palm Springs in 1951 and raised in Section 14 until about 1964, when we were forced out of the home that my father built with his hard-earned money. I'd like to say, please keep those of us who are harmed greatly by the actions under Frank Bogart's leadership of the housing destruction on Section 14 in mind. He was not only racist, he was also homophobic. We are in favor of taking the statue down. Thank you.
Donna Sturgeon, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Thank you so much, Donna Sturgeon. I'd just like to speak out on behalf of the 5C, the Frank Bogart statue removal. I just feel quite strongly that Mr. Bogart provided so much to the city. His contributions are bigger than building an airport or building or a tramway. It's what he left us. It's a young cowboy who really developed this city. There are no indications to my mind that he has done anything but lift up this community in his role as mayor and as a resident. So that is my contribution.
Thank you. Andrew Stark, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Andrew Starkey, and I am the president of Power Baseball. We've been hosting our opening day fireworks shows dating back to 2005. This tradition is a celebration not only for the start of a new season of your one and only hometown team, but a community-first event put on for the residents and the fans. All of our winter and summer games, like all of our winter and summer games, this event in particular is a family-friendly event with more kids than you can imagine. Thousands of people enjoy the show from within Palm Springs Stadium, but even more enjoy the show from Sunrise Park, Palm Springs High School, and the surrounding neighborhoods. One of our partners, Eisenhower Medical Center, has been hosting their employee appreciation picnic with us on opening day since 2013. Once again, they're ready to thank their frontline employees and families by allowing us to host this event for them. Today, in a conversation with Marty Macielo, the CEO of Eisenhower Medical Center, he encouraged me to reference our conversation and express his strong support for the city of Palm Springs to allow us to celebrate our 2022 season opener with another professionally-run firework display. Thus, I am asking the city council to allow Power Baseball to once again go through the set process to keep our opening day firework display on the approval list. Thank you for your time and consideration, and please, put the residents and children first, as our display is for thousands of them, for the thousands of them that can talk to us and tell us how much they enjoy the display. Thank you.
Keith Zabel, you are live at the city council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments. You may begin.
Great, thank you. Good evening, city council. My name is Keith Zabel, and I'm a resident of the Palm Springs Sunmore Neighborhood. I'm calling to lend my voice to the community debate over the fireworks within our city. I was of the understanding this matter had been resolved through compromise by allowing fireworks only on two holidays, July 4th and Veterans' Day. And while fireworks evoke wonderful memories of my youth, as an adult, I've come to realize their danger to people, animals, and the environment, and we share our community with a multitude of animals, in particular, our domesticated pets, wildlife, and many community cats. Fireworks cause all these animals extreme anxiety, sudden fear, which causes them to flee their homes in order to escape the noise, and this can result with them being disoriented and subsequently lost, and some in the process get killed by coyotes and vehicles. Fireworks should continue to be limited to the two already-approved holidays. Other events and holidays can choose alternative visual displays that do not involve explosions. Thank you so much for your time.
Janelle Hunt, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to give your comments, and you may begin.
Good evening. My name is Janelle Hunt, and I would like to share my thoughts about item 5C, the removal of the Frank Bogart statue. It amazes me the audacity of people never excuse to amaze me. Here we are tonight with an agenda item, the removal of the Frank Bogart statue yet again, and an agenda item that people would rather utilize resources to stop Google up, an agency, an agenda item that was voted to be removed, but yet, here we are again. I just don't understand why. Why must we, as descendants and survivors and the survivors protections, keep having to retell their stories to help provide a visual of a man, Frank Bogart, who was the mayor of this city? The city of Palm Springs, a city where a mayor is responsible for the safety of the city citizens. A mayor is to oversee the public service departments such as police and fire. A mayor has the right and authority to close public buildings and areas deemed unsafe because of damage. A mayor who orders the evacuation and present transportation plans when necessary, as it was stated in the article titled "What Is the Mayor's Responsibility For?" If these are the duties of a mayor, can you honestly say Frank Bogart, along with his other fellow city council members, did what was best for the residents of Section 14? I guess the history of Palm Springs can be a little foggy for those who were and still remain entitled. Our city has an ugly past, then why not eradicate everything that has been tied to an ugly past so that... So what do you think of that Frank Bogart statue? Well, it needs to go. A statue that stands in front of a government building, a government building that is supposed to represent all cities of the city of Palm Springs, including those that lived on Section 14. Frank Bogart, I don't care how you look at it, played a role in uplifting families, my family, and many other people's families, children's, and people having to lose their personal belongings.
Thank you, Janelle. Your time is up. Dottie Wilder, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Hi, my name is Dottie Wilder, and my comment is, I don't know what figure could be any more historical in Palm Springs than Frank Bogart and a horse. And certainly, when I came to Palm Springs, he gave me something to identify with, and I love horses as well, and all the many events he either set up or took part in, arranged for people to enjoy. And the many years he was a visible person in the desert. To me, there's nobody more historical, and so I think the statue should remain where it is. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes the public comment, and we were able to reach everyone who wished to speak.
Thank you, and that was done beautifully, and we appreciate all of the comments that we heard from everyone in our community. In Palm Springs, we expect to hear from our residents, from our neighbors, and we do, and thank you. Next, it is city council subcommittee and city manager reports and comments. Is there anyone on council who would like to provide a report? Mayor Protem Garner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to give a shout out to the BRAF program, Building Resilience in African-American Communities. They held their Living African-American Museum this weekend, which was basically their students, these young students between about 11 to 13 years old, who embodied their African-American ancestors and civic leaders. We saw John Lewis, saw African kings, sports stars. It was just everyone that you could think of was represented by these children, and it was absolutely stunning. They had visual displays, they were dressed in costume. It was incredibly moving. I just want to make sure that Tanea and all of the team over at BRAF know how important it is that we have events like this, and I am just very grateful to have attended, and I hope that next year, every one of us can go. It was really not to be missed, and that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let me add just a couple of things. One, I want to thank everyone associated with Modernism Week for all of the work that you have done over the last week and the incredible number of visitors that have come to our city and gotten an opportunity to enjoy the iconic architecture of our community, and we look forward to having you back again next year to visit, and hopefully with fewer restrictions that have to be in place. On a personal note, at the February Kelpers Board of Administration meeting, I was re-elected to be the chair of the Risk Nautic Committee and was elected to be the chair of the Finance and Administration Committee. It is the Finance and Administration Committee that is responsible for holding hearings and making recommendations regarding the rates that individuals will pay. That's not the only responsibility they have, but it is certainly one that's near and dear to all of us in municipal government. Is there anyone else from council? Councilmember Woods.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the mayor for your talk about Texas and transgender children. Thank you very much. I fully support those comments that you made. They were very articulate. I just want to say that the CB Sync, which is a traffic signal synchronization project down Highway 111 and Ramon, is continuing to move forward. We did a groundbreaking of that several months ago. It's continuing to move forward, but the glory about this will be that it will hopefully be a backbone infrastructure for bringing better internet access to the city. I will hopefully, I've been asked for a report, and I will hopefully have more details on that coming up next month that I can report out to the council and the public. I wanted, as Mayor Protem said, I want to give a shout out to three neighborhoods in District 2, Al Rancha Vista Estates, Sagewood HOA, and the Little Tuscany Neighborhood Organization. All three of those organizations have painstakingly put together home tours for Modernism Week, which they opened their homes for tourists from out of town as well as those from in-town. It not only creates a sense of neighborhood and community and brings people together, but it also showcases our city on a much broader basis. Sagewood and Little Tuscany have already hosted theirs. Al Rancha Vista Estates will be Friday, or excuse me, it will be February 26th, and there are still tickets available if anyone wants to buy them through the Modernism website. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hostage.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I have a few announcements and then a few comments and requests. One, I'm holding my District 4 Town Hall on March 2nd at 4:00 PM on Zoom, so anyone in the city or not even in the city is welcome to attend those, and we respond to community questions and get city staff and others to answer your questions, and I'm always happy to answer questions, too, so it should be a good forum. We're doing those quarterly now, so I hope everyone can attend. I also, a chair, as the council knows, the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, our homeless committee, and so just for this council and the public, we had a meeting on Wednesday, February 16th. Those meetings are open to the public, and they are on Zoom now, so you don't need to drive to Palm Desert and back if you're a Palm Springs resident. And there's a few things I just want to flag for the council. One, Lift to Rise, which is a nonprofit working on a plan to facilitate 10,000 units of affordable housing in the Coachella Valley in 10 years. They're working on a housing catalyst fund, a way to help fund projects that are stalled because cities lack resources or redevelopment was taken away, or affordable housing developers can't access financing, like bridge financing or gap financing or something like that. So they're building a catalyst fund, and they've already catalyzed, I think, 500 units across the Coachella Valley, and they've deployed 3.5 million in loan funding. The county of Riverside is granting $2 million to this fund, and I just wanted to flag it for the council, and there was discussion, I asked at that meeting, how cities might be able to help this fund. We frequently invest, you know, project by project by project, but this is an opportunity to hold money in a fund and then leverage those funds to help multiple affordable housing projects, if that makes sense. So say the, you know, 5 million that we've invested in affordable housing projects, you know, over the last few years could be held in a fund and then reused to fuel other development, if that makes sense, and I'm describing that accurately. So I just wanted to, I think it's a really interesting idea for council to be aware of, of regional efforts on affordable housing, and as we look at our budget and even how we're holding some of our money in terms of reserves or other, you know, additional funding we may receive, if we might want to think about, you know, how to hold those funds or help support this catalyst fund, as we know we need hundreds and thousands of more units throughout the valley. There's also in that meeting, CV Housing First 2021 Year in Review Staff Report, and I'd urge the council and the community to read that and see what our CV Housing First is doing, just for the community. Though you don't see a shelter or housing beds in the city of Palm Springs, we are part of a regional Housing First program, which is housing people. We're doing a CV 200 by-name list of chronically homeless folks in the Coachella Valley and working to get them housed. So I just wanted to flag for the committee and the council and the community that that program has housed 75 people of those 200 people in the year 2021. And remember, these are the hardest to house folks with chronic illnesses and other difficulties, and so really exciting progress, and nearly all of those stayed housed, keeping track of what happens to them on the back end, too, and not just counting temporary housing as housed. So really exciting progress, and you can look and see sort of how those numbers break down. So we're working to repopulate the list and then also think through, you know, how else to provide services and housing services to people who are homeless. So people always ask us what they're doing on homelessness, and so I wanted to provide that update really quick. And so I wanted to provide that update really quickly. I just wanted to say thank you to Anthony, our city clerk. I just want to take a minute. You have been such an incredible city clerk. It's been such a pleasure to serve with you. I came on and was elected, you know, right before you started. And you swore me and Lisa in, and actually, the first LGBTQ city council in the country, by the way. And you've sworn in a lot of firsts that our city has elected. And I've just been so impressed by your leadership, especially moving to districts, and how engaged you were with our residents and how much our residents just truly love you. And you've been such an integral leader in our organization and in our entire community. And we are so, so sad to lose you, but so supportive of your career continuing to grow and flourish. And we know that you are really a statewide and national leader and city clerk organizations and associations. And we know your career is just getting started. So we are here to support you for whatever you need and just really grateful to the, you know, thousands and tens of thousands of hours that you've dedicated to Palm Springs residents and all the progress we've made over the last four and five years. So thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Councilmember Holstich, and thank you, council.
Last, I just wanted to thank the mayor for her incredibly powerful and personal statements about what is happening. And frankly, not just in Texas, but across this country. To see the trans community under attack is horrific. And I'm just truly proud of Mayor Middleton. I'm glad to call her a friend for her leadership and her voice in this effort. And you're an incredible mayor. And to be the first transgender mayor sworn in in the country and to be able to speak out on behalf of Palm Springs and Palm Springs residents, where we do want to lead the way for diversity and inclusion. And we do want to be a safe haven for the trans community. I just want to thank you for adding to your voice because I know it's personal and difficult to share that story. Last, I just wanted to ask for an agenda item. So as the council knows, I have been working for almost a year on, with Mayors for a Guaranteed Income. The city council passed a resolution in support of Mayors for a Guaranteed Income and the city supporting those efforts. I have had numerous, numerous conversations with dozens of service providers throughout the region. Councilmember Corus has joined me on a lot of those conversations. And we finally found a provider in the city of Palm Springs who's willing to do a pilot program, willing and able, because the able is the hard part, to do a pilot program for a guaranteed income. And DAP Health, excuse me. DAP Health, leading on all the work they do for the LGBTQ community and all the health services that they provide to our community, excuse me, hold on. Is working with Queer Works, a trans-led organization, to build out a pilot program to support the trans community. So they've submitted a budget request to me, which I'd like the city council to agendize and consider, their budget request for the city to fund them building out a pilot program. It would be the first pilot program to support the trans community in the country. Sorry, hold on. I think it's an incredible opportunity to support DAP Health and Queer Works and all the work that they've done and really show how to support the trans community in a city like ours. So I'd like to ask that we agendize that for an upcoming meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holstich. And your voice is better than two days ago, but obviously, it has its limits. So take care of yourself. Are there any other council members? Councilmember Corus.
Great. Thank you, mayor, and thank you so much for your comments. So important right now. I guess it's a question, because I know we're going to talk about how we add things to the agenda later tonight for the city manager. So we want council, right, I think it's going to be a majority of council to add something to the agenda, in my understanding. Working on this is it's just, it's a funding request, not work for staff to start this project so they can get the state funding and grants that the states approved, $35 million for. So how do we do that? Is that something we do as a motion? What would, what would you like to decide if we're adding it to the agenda? I guess is my question.
So I do think it's appropriate during this section for future agenda items to introduce again, this, now you've had some time to consider it over the course of the meeting. And with any majority, really either by formal vote or simple direction from council, we'll place out on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. I'll save my comments for then. Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
All right. Mr. Clifton, do you or anyone else from staff have any comments?
Not this evening, mayor, thank you.
Okay. Then the next item that we have is to act on the consent calendar. No items were pulled. I will entertain a motion to accept, to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve?
One second.
Motion, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Corus.
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
All right. Then our next item is a public hearing item. It is one that we needed to take as close to 7:00 PM as we could. And we're getting in under the wire at 7:22. Item 2A, a public hearing regarding redistricting of city council boundaries, adoption of a boundaries map, and introduction of an ordinance. Staff report, please.
Madam Mayor and City Council, just give me one second, I'm sorry. Honorable Mayor and City Council, tonight, I am joined by our attorney, Jim Priest, and elections expert. This is our fourth public hearing on the redistricting process. And presented for your consideration are maps L and K. The maps only differ as it relates to the Old Las Palmas neighborhood. Under map K, the District 3 boundary meets District 5 at the Alejo Road and North Palm Canyon Drive. Alternatively, map L extends District 3 boundary to West Takwitz Canyon Way and Palm Canyon Drive, ensuring that the Old Las Palmas neighborhood is not split between two districts. Otherwise, both maps ensure that the Lawrence Crossley neighborhood is within District 1, moves the Sunmore neighborhood from District 3 to District 1, maintains a majority-minority district within District 1, and are within the deviation range of 6.9 or 7.6. If desired, I can pull up either of the maps. And Jim Priest and I are available for questions.
Mr. Mejia, we've got some very slight modifications in Districts 1, 2, and 1 and 3. Is, are there any modifications in Districts 2, 4, or 5 from the present map?
Let me take a look.
And I ask because people are pretty familiar with what we have right now.
Yes. So in the District, in District 2 and District 1, the Amico Street area in the Jean Autry neighborhood was previously in District 1, and that Amico Street area is now moving into District 2. But other than that, Lawrence Crossley, the Old Las Palmas neighborhood and the Jean Autry neighborhood and Sunmore are the ones that are being impacted.
All right. And no other residents are impacted, then?
Correct.
Not to cut Mr. Priest short, but we've had a lot of conversation on this. Is there anything you definitely wanted to say, Mr. Priest? Or can I move directly to ask council member questions?
No, certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I have nothing really additional to add to Mr. Mejia's presentation. And so if you'd like to move to council deliberations, I'm available for questions if you have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Priest or for staff? Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Garner.
Thank you. I just want to ask a clarifying question that I, about Arnaco, because we, I had asked if we could include the Arnaco into District 1 again. And I know that our city clerk has an answer for why that wasn't possible, so if you could share that.
Certainly. So in analyzing those two census blocks, there's approximately 206 residents in that area. And that is being used to balance the deviation level in District 2. If we were to revert back, we would be at a deviation level above 10%.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of that, since it was discussed last time. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments, or questions from council for staff or Mr. Priest? Seeing none, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on public hearing for up to two minutes. If there are other speakers, the applicant will be invited to provide a two-minute rebuttal. Where are the applicants so that that will be unnecessary? So, Mr. Mejia, do we have any public comment?
We do, and we'll reach Mr. David Friedman in just one moment.
Okay.
Mr. Friedman, you are live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Middleton, Mayor Protem Garner, and council members. My name is David Friedman. I would like to thank staff, and particularly Mr. Mejia and the demographer for making the changes in maps K and L that I suggested in the public hearing two weeks ago. I support map L with the new boundaries of the Old Las Palmas neighborhood as best reflecting council's goal to keep organized neighborhoods intact to the extent practical, and urge adoption of map L by city council. Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Do we have any other public comment?
That concludes public comment.
All right. There being no other speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Is there discussion or additional questions from council? Mayor Protem Garner, and then councilmember Corus.
Thank you. It's really good to see us being able to move through this, this process. And I think these maps look good. I did want to point out that one of our other maps that was submitted by the public did have over 50% C-VAP numbers for, to make it a majority-minority district. And I think that was just overlooked last time, so I just wanted to raise that up. I think the options that we have in front of us are great, and we should move forward discussing them. But I just wanted to say that we just kind of missed that one little thing when we were talking about it last time. I didn't want to have that overlooked. And that was map I, I believe.
Councilmember Corus, and then councilmember Holstich.
Sure. Just want to share, you know, I support map L. Right, one of our sort of four priorities was, to the extent we could, to keep neighborhoods together. The boundaries of Old Las Palmas changed. Since our first map, it's 80 people, so it still keeps us well within the allowed deviation. And I think the neighborhood organization wants to welcome the 80 new members in and have them have the same representative. So at neighborhood meetings, et cetera, that works. So I just wanted to share that. I think there's more discussion, but I'm happy to make a motion at any point the mayor would like.
Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on Mayor Protem Garner's point because I believe I checked with the city clerk, and there was some correction there that it wasn't a true majority-minority district. Is that right, city staff?
I'm, I'm sorry, for which, which map?
I.
I.
Map I. I think it was based on the actual voting age population versus the overall population. Is that right?
I'm going to refer to Jim Priest, because he has the, perhaps he has the map in front of him.
You're muted, Mr. Priest.
I'm trying to pull up map I with the demographics right now.
Thank you. And I'm not sure it's, I think it's a moot point, since we're not considering that map right now. I just wanted to say for the record, I talked to the city clerk, and there are a number of, there was a map, map F. I think that definitely had, it looked like it would create a majority-minority district, but then it did not, based on the total number. So I thought that was the map that Mayor Protem Garner was referring to, and I wasn't sure if that was the same case. But thank you. I think it was just a point for the record. We don't need to look it up. Thank you.
Oh. But I do have it in front of me. If, for map I, District 1 has a non-white C-VAP of 46%. So it, even though the total population may have exceeded, it's in the 66% range. Those who are actually eligible to vote would be under a minority, would be under 50%.
Thank you, Mr. Mejia. And so that's for that reason why I didn't support that map.
Councilmember Corus, would you like to make your motion?
Sure. Noting how appropriate it is that we're doing district maps on Anthony's last meeting, given his unbelievable work in getting us very similar maps just a few years ago. That's really, makes this especially a nice occasion. And with that, I'd like to move map L forward as the map that we adopt.
Is there a second for that motion? Councilmember Woods? And any further discussion? Councilmember Woods?
I'd just like to make a clarification, and Anthony or Jim Priest, maybe you can do it. With the map that's proposed for the public, the Amico Track, which is Jean Autry, will stay in 2, will be moved to 2 to make that neighborhood whole. And then the Whitewater District will be moved from District 2 to District 1.
If I could just add, and I think I would get seconded on this by councilmember Holstich, that I am very pleased to be able to continue to represent all of the neighborhoods that are enclosed in, currently in District 5, and that we don't have to make even a single change in, in that map is very pleasing. Roll call, please.
And Madam, Madam Mayor, before we take the roll call off, let me just clarify that the motion this evening is to move map L and introduce the ordinance that's attached to the staff report that will incorporate map L per your direction.
Thank you. And are we going to need to read this after we?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Councilmember Corus?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0, and I'll read the ordinance title, which is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, amending Palm Springs Municipal Code Section 2.02.005B Regarding By-District Elections, Adjusting the Boundaries of City Council Election Districts and Confirming Such Revised City Council District Boundaries as Reflected in the Attached Map, Map Option L. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are very pleased to get that issue resolved. Now it's time for item 2B, an application by Charles and Patricia Stump, owners of the historic designation of the William Purcell residence located at 252 Ocatillo Drive. And I will note, in pure coincidence, that Mayor Protem Garner and I had the pleasure of sitting at the breakfast for the Indio Independent President's Day Parade with Charles on Monday this week and watching him drive off on his beautifully historic Thunderbird. So with that, I'd like to ask for the staff report.
Good evening, council. Madam Mayor, give me just a moment, I will start the presentation. So the matter before you this evening is a public hearing to consider designating the William- So the matter before you this evening is a public hearing to consider designating the William Purcell Residence historic. Purcell Residence was designed by architect William Purcell and constructed in 1934. Mr. Purcell was a notable architect between 1900, 1920. His earliest, this this home that's before you this evening is the earliest example of residential modern architecture in the city of Palm Springs. It's and it's also his only known commission in the in the valley here. So this is a picture when the home was built in 1934. And the matter was considered by the Historic Site Preservation Board on December 7th, and that they found that the home met three of the required criteria for designation for a class one or class historic designation. So criteria on two being that Mr. Purcell was a person making meaningful contribution. His history is relative to the American Prairie School of Architecture, and he did work with George Elmsley, and together they are have notable work of small-town banks designed and constructed throughout the Midwest. And so that is for criteria on number two. And then as it relates to criteria on number three, it exemplifies the period a particular period in history, notably here, this was between the wars, the World War One and World War Two. As I said, it was one of the earliest residential structures in Palm Springs designed in a modernist style of architecture. It also represents a transition in architectural design and taste after World War One. So as I said, it was kind of the earlier parts of modern architecture in Palm Springs. And then lastly, criteria number five, it is the work of a master architect. William Purcell is was instrumental in defining and developing what has become known as American Organic or Prairie School of Architecture. And that was found more than founded more than 20 states throughout the nation. So those were the criteria necessary to grant a designation when it comes to whether the board or the city designates the properties class one or class two. The council would also also have to find that the home is of good integrity, has a high degree of integrity. In this case, there have been additions to the exterior of the building that have impaired the integrity. So because of that, the board did recommend a class two designation. So and you can see a little bit of that here when the picture on the left shows the building when it was built in 1934. Here on the right, you see the some of the horizontal elements of the architecture have been covered with stucco. The garage door has been covered and has now now has windows. So there's been a series of things that have happened to the structures to reduce some of the integrity required for the highest level, which is the class one designation. So again, staff has prepared a recommendation or a resolution for you, your consideration this evening to designate the property a class two structure. And this is a public hearing, and in the resolution, I would just note we've identified what portions of the property do contribute and those that are not contributing to the class two designation. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Are there questions for Steph? I don't see any. Do we have any public? Any public speakers?
We have no we have no public comment on this item.
All right. There being no public speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Is there discussion or additional questions from staff? Council, Mayor Protem Garner.
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation. This is a house I've actually driven by for almost 20, the last 20 years, almost every day. It's down the street from where I grew up.
I'll second.
Thank you. I just want to add that it was pure coincidence that we ended up sitting at the table with Charles on Monday, but we got a chance to hear at a personal level some of the history of his family and that home, and it is really a pleasure to be able to move on this matter this evening on behalf of everyone in City Council. Our congratulations for your role in preserving the history of our city. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Corus.
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. We have a couple of items left on the agenda that that may take a little bit of time, but one of those that we can move through relatively quickly is item 5B, which is the fiscal year financial audit reports of the city of Palm Springs. And if there is no objection, I'd like to go ahead and do 5B, allow the auditors to give their report and give them their evening back. And then we will take a short break before moving on back to item 4A and dealing with that issue. And I see no objections, so we will move forward with staff report, please, on item 5B.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. Steph is recommending that you receive and file the financial audit reports for fiscal year on June 30th, 2021. The audit was performed by the Poon Group, and tonight we have the partner, Ken Poon, and he'd like to give you a short presentation. Ken? Ken, can you hear us? Ken? Uh-oh.
It's not looking like he hears us.
Ken, are you able to hear us? I don't think he's able to hear hear us at this time.
I'm able to hear.
Okay, good, good. We I thought we lost you for a moment.
No, don't worry.
So you could go ahead and give your presentation, please.
Thank you so much. Let me share real quick, and good evening, Mayor and member of the City Council here. My name is Ken Poon. I'm the managing partner of the Poon Group here and the auditor for the City of Palm Springs here. Would like to actually present to you tonight is the list of report, but mainly focusing on the act for the annual comprehensive annual financial report. So this is a standard presentation. This is for the year end, June 30, 2021, which covers the last fiscal year that you have. So we we complete our audit in December and present to you tonight the audit results. So first off, it's actually talking about our responsibility in accordance with the professional standard. As you as you can tell, you're engaging our firm to perform the audit. So we are here to express our opinion on the financial statement and making sure that these financial statements are presented in accordance in the accordance with generally accepted accounting principle. Our responsibility is to plan the audit and perform the audit in accordance with with generally accepted auditing standard, and according to the standard, we need to obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement, whether due from fraud or errors. Our audit approach and also with the professional auditing standard, we are required to consider internal control over financial reporting. And such considerations solely determine our audit procedures and not to provide any assurance concerning such internal control. But if we do identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiency, you will definitely hear from us in in writing. So the audit results. We are we are happy to present to you that the financial statements are fairly presented. So that's why we are issuing a modified opinion, which is the best opinion that we can give to the give it to our audit audittee. What what an unmodified opinions mean is that the financial statements are fairly present in all material respect. The significant accounting policy have been consistently applied, the estimates are reasonable, and the disclosure are properly reflected in these financial statements. However, we do actually have one audit findings is relating to the internal control over financial reporting. And this is the audit finding present to you. During the audit, we actually do make a couple prior period adjustment to really to clean up some of the misreporting in the Internal Service Fund and kind of clean up some some of the the reporting requirements. A couple of the reasons why since last year, you do actually have experienced a significant reduction of staff due to COVID-19, and also during this fiscal year, you are in the process of implementing a new ERP system. So having said that, it's not surprised that there are some corrections that needs to be made, but everything with with the new additional staff within your finance team, the internal control are being set up and reviewed new procedures. Also, the finance department also complete the implementation of the new ERP system, so therefore the issues has been resolved. So that's conclude my presentation, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Poon? There we go. I can see everyone. Mr. Poon, I'm not seeing any, so let me ask you just a couple of really basic questions that I know you'll be able to answer. The in the course of the audit, were you able to access all records that you sought?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And were you able to access all individuals that you wish to speak with and interview?
Yes.
And was there any information that you sought that was denied to you?
No, there isn't.
Okay. And I I knew that was going to be what the answers were, but I wanted to get them into the public record to to make sure that everyone knows that's how we go about doing our external audits, and I'm very pleased to hear those answers.
Great.
There are no questions or comments from City Council. This is a receive and file item, and we will take and receive it. Thank you. And Mr. Poon, thank you and your team for your work.
Thank you so much.
With that, it is 7:48. Let's take a break until 8:00 AM or 8:00 PM sharp, and we will then reconvene. Thank you. Uh, and, uh, uh, we will then re- reconvene. Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Uh, and, and within the staff report, I would also like to specifically ask that staff explain why we are revisiting this issue, since so many in the community did believe that, uh, it had been resolved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. I'm Jeannie Case, I am the interim Parks and Recreation Director. My lighting's a little orange. I'm here tonight along with, uh, Jasmine Waits to continue the discussion of the use of fireworks within the city of Palm Springs. At the September ninth meeting, council heard about noise concerns and explored options for quiet fireworks or alternatives to fireworks. Said that staff returned with more information focused on air quality impacts and recommendations for other events using fireworks. So tonight's staff report is a continuation of that September ninth discussion and specifically addresses council's request to investigate the air quality impact of fireworks. And Jasmine and I are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there questions for staff? Uh, council, uh, council, okay, he's shaking his head. Are there any questions for staff? All right, Miss, Councilmember Coors, you can't make that many hand motions without, uh, doing something.
No, I was just resting my hand on my, my chin when you thought I was, I had questions.
Anyone else? All right. Uh, are, if there are no questions from anyone, uh, is there, uh, a discussion of, uh, uh, this by council? Uh, Councilmember Woods?
Um, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Jeannie, I'm sorry, I didn't ask earlier. Can you talk a little about the, um, or Jasmine, the pollution impacts of, um, fireworks and what your discovery showed?
Sure, thank you. Um, I reached out to the South Coast Air Quality Management, um, group and, and spoke with actually, um, Dr. Pacman. He is the, um, um, the supervisor, the program supervisor in Advanced Monitoring Technologies at South Coast AQMD. So he provided me with some detailed information about some of the studies that they've done at AQMD. And, um, and those reports are in your staff report. He talked about, um, emissions and fireworks are equivalent to automobile emissions. They actually produce the same particulate matter and, um, very similar. It's, it's very similar to an auto emission. And so, um, so he explained all of this to me. He, he talked to me of, and sent me an article which I, um, included in your packet as well. Um, his explanation was that there, there aren't really good studies about local community fireworks. There are these larger studies, and that's what, um, this, the article that's attached to your staff report says. There are these large studies about India and China and, um, and even, um, the AQMD studied the South Coast Basin, which is really the LA Inland Empire region, but it doesn't include Palm Springs. And so, um, he gave a recommendation that, um, there, there's a website called Purple Air. And it's community scientific, um, like, community scientist. You, you, you can purchase these air quality monitors, um, and put it up at your home and, and do live air quality monitoring. And he recommended that maybe, um, that's something that we could look into. I think that's a great idea, um, just in general, fireworks or no fireworks. I think the, um, these air quality monitors would be a great thing for us to explore in the city. Um, and so, I hope that answered your question. I, fireworks are similar to the emissions that are put out by automobiles, just in the air.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Coors?
Uh, great. Thank you. Um, you know, I've done a lot of research, um, I think I've shared some when we first discussed this. Um, I've shared with staff, uh, impacts of fireworks and not just air quality. And I appreciate the additional information, um, that you got, so thank you for that. But also the heavy metals that end up in food and water, wildlife and pests and jest. Um, information on a number of pets who escape and run away during fireworks due to their sensitive hearing, which we heard testimony about, impacts on people, including those with PTSD, which we've heard about. You know, personally, for me, most of my life, fireworks are one of my favorite things, right? I always look forward to them. But as I learn more about the harms and the impacts on the environment, people and pets, I've concluded that there are better ways to celebrate holidays and other occasions that don't have all these negative impacts. You know, as a city, we pride ourselves in being a leader on protecting the environment, public health, and the welfare of animals, both domestic and wildlife. Um, I appreciate council has already voted to allow fireworks for, uh, two occasions, July fourth and Veterans Day. Um, but I don't think we should expand that. I do support, uh, the staff suggestion of a one-year pilot program with air quality monitors. And based on that report, it looks like we should try and keep fireworks as far away from residential neighborhoods as we can, that the explosions occur as high up as possible. Um, and I thought it was really interesting that they recommend that we send notices in advance of fireworks, including that the Air Quality Management District, uh, recommendation to alert people to keep their doors and windows closed for a specified period of time, after the fireworks show to protect human life. Um, which surely makes me question, um, using fireworks. But that said, I think we should do those things. Now, I've heard from lots of people who also love fireworks and want to have them. Uh, you know, and I heard from, um, Power Baseball. Uh, but I've also heard from, you know, folks, uh, you know, primarily in District Three, uh, about the fireworks, uh, over, um, Veterans Day Parade and the impacts that had. So to the extent we can make sure we're notifying folks, you know, I heard from folks as far away as Ascena from the high school, when they had their graduation fireworks and the traumatized pets, um, you know, including medical conditions that pets suffered. Uh, so, you know, I think, I, unfortunately, was the one council meeting I missed was when this was discussed. But I understand, uh, at least a lot of people thought it was going to be for the two, you know, patriotic occasions and not others. And so, uh, I would hope that we continue, uh, with, with that. And, um, I think why we're here is it was unclear whether that was voted on or, um, it was just those two that were voted on and the rest were deferred. So just for the public, um, from my reviewing that meeting, that's, that's the reason it's back.
Are there other council members who want to weigh in? Well, let me, uh, jump in. Uh, this has been a topic of lots of conversation in our city. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, one of the issues that we have had when it comes to fireworks is, uh, uh, in our city because of where they tend to be shot out at and where our residents are. Uh, fireworks in, uh, in Palm Springs are, uh, very, very close to residences and homes and, uh, uh, which heightens the impact. So, uh, I believe that, uh, we have done well in identifying uh, two incredibly important, uh, patriotic holidays that have a long history in association with fireworks, Veterans Day, uh, and the Fourth of July. Uh, and, uh, those are longstanding celebrations in our community, and we take a lot, awful lot of pride in Palm Springs with both, uh, days and the events associated. Uh, so I want to preserve those, but, uh, I am as well, uh, would like to stay with just those two days for fireworks. And I agree with Councilmember Coors, we should do everything that we can, uh, to make, uh, clear in our community, the two, two days we're going to have them and the time of day that we're going to have them, so that those who are particularly sensitive, uh, be it, uh, an individual, uh, person or one of our, uh, uh, pets who are truly members of our family, uh, that, uh, we can take the precautions appropriate. Any other comments? Is there a motion? Councilmember Coors?
So I make a motion that, uh, we don't give any additional, um, permits besides the two city, um, events that were already approved, that we, uh, do move forward with, uh, the pilot monitoring. Um, I think, uh, not just for fireworks, but in general. Um, I think that's a good thing for the city, and that we provide notice, uh, to residents with enough, uh, advanced notice to residents about when fireworks, uh, are happening, uh, so they can prepare if they do have, uh, pets or other, other issues.
And I will second that motion. Any other comments and discussion? Uh, Councilmember Woods?
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm wondering if there isn't a compromise, um, to this. And, um, and, uh, Jasmine and Jeannie, maybe you can, can address it. Um, you know, we have these fireworks, I guess, that, you know, don't make noise. You know, they, they give the, the, the spectacular light show, but they don't make noise. Can you talk to that with a little bit?
Maybe Jasmine can speak to that.
I can. So in my previous presentation, I did show a short video of what they consider, um, quiet fireworks. They're not necessarily quiet, they're just quieter than original fireworks. So some of the larger cylinders that the city uses, um, for, for our fireworks show provide a, a lo- um, a louder backfire sound, which is the sound that is causing concern for our residents. And what the quiet fireworks show it uses is just the smaller cylinder. So there still is a sound, it's just not as loud as the larger ones are.
Councilmember Coors?
Sure, so is there a downside to those other than, um, the quiet earnest for those who like the loud band?
The, the only issue is, is they don't, um, fly as high in the sky. So they would be better utilized for, uh, smaller events, say maybe something that was taking place on the O'Donnell Golf Course, where, um, Evening Under the Stars uses fireworks typically. They, they have not requested it for this year, but, um, it, it, it can be seen on, on a flat service. It would not be great for our Fourth of July fireworks show where the, um, radius of people watching the, the fireworks show is much further out. So it's good for a very small kind of intimate setting.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Woods?
Um, and it seems to me like in looking at the one, two, three, four, five, uh, potentials that we've had in the past, including the Home Cunning Parade and the White Party, those are all smaller events that would go, that quiet might work because, um, they're for smaller events that are usually in a smaller geographic location. Would that be correct?
The only one that stands out to me that, well, actually, both the- The only one that stands out to me that, well, actually, both the the probably the high school would be a little bit challenging based on. Where they shoot their fireworks off from and um Power Baseball would be a little bit challenging because they also shoot it. From the same location that we do for July 4th. So it is a smaller group of people that attend their their opening at the Power Baseball uh game. But it it still is behind a fence uh that would be, a lot of their fireworks wouldn't reach over the fence. For viewing pleasure from the stadium.
Are there other comments? Uh council member Holstich.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Jeannie, for the amazing research that you did. It really takes a librarian. Um to get amazing research like this or this issue. Sorry, I have a child in the background. Um I just was wondering in terms of if there's been any outreach or conversation with the school district. About the Palm Springs Homecoming Parade and uh if we've heard or talked to them at all about their plans to continue that. Um for the students or not.
There hasn't been any outreach to um the high school in terms of uh their fireworks show. They tend to do something probably every other year while the last year they utilized the fireworks show for their graduation. Uh because they held it outdoors, which was a unique situation. Normally it's indoors at the convention center. But in order to um be COVID safe, they did it outdoors and the fireworks show is just a bonus. And um some years they'll do it for their homecoming parade or their homecoming uh game and some years they won't do it. So there hasn't been any outreach, but I'm more than happy to do so to find out if they have a a consistent schedule that they would like to implement.
Thanks. That's helpful. And where do they shoot those fireworks off from?
So um it is a field that is just uh south of their football field. There's kind of a like a dip area. They shoot them off from from that dip area uh so that it so that everyone at the football game can can view.
Thanks. That's helpful.
Any other comments or questions? In uh, I think it's a roll call, please.
Certainly. And I'll just clarify, the motion is to implement a pilot air monitoring program. Uh there will be no permits except for the Fourth of July and Veterans Day events. And there'll be notification regarding the date and time of the fireworks. Uh with that, council member course.
Yes.
Mayor Middleton.
Hi.
Council member Holstich.
No.
Council member Woods.
No.
Mayor Proton Middleton.
Oh, I think that's me.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protim Gardner. I apologize.
I was a little confused for a second. Um. No.
Motion fills three to two.
Uh is there a substitute motion or is there a uh another motion that uh? Uh a member of council would like to make? Council member Woods.
Um I'll take a shot at it. Um I will agree with council member course and the mayor um about the monitoring. I think that's a good thing for us. I'm um I'd like to propose at least we can try it for a year or or reach out to some of the people. Um to try some of the quieter fireworks for these smaller events versus the big city events. We'll see if there's a second for that.
Is there a limit on the number of uh these smaller events that you are proposing, uh councilman Woods?
Um I wasn't because, you know, it's very expensive to host fireworks, so it has to be some of the events that we've had in the past. Um so I wasn't at this point unless um you know, if if in the future, if we find out it doesn't work, we can come back and revisit it.
Uh council member course.
Just a clarification, because I know they weren't on the list. Um and I don't know if that was due to COVID, but. I've been to weddings where people have had fireworks. Um I don't know whether without permits, but actually professional fireworks, so. Just wanted to raise that uh. So I don't know if this is unlimited, if this is just certain small events, you know, just some clarification, or is it just unlimited? That your motion is.
Um at this point, it was unlimited, but I don't know if we have a second for it. Um so we'll see where that goes.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, can I ask a clarifying question, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Or if I could just ask Jasmine a question um to follow up on that. So. Um can you respond about the permit requests that we get for the fireworks for private events like weddings? Um is that included in the five to eight? Permits a year fireworks permits a year that the city typically sees?
Uh it is. So the list that you have in your staff report um was identified based on the last three years. Of permits that came through and this is from the fire department. So. Uh yes, it is inclusive of uh any smaller private events. Uh we do get those requests and uh they do go through the same process. We just haven't received them in a couple of years. But it but on average, it's anywhere between five to eight uh fireworks show in the city uh throughout the year.
And could you explain for the public, especially the special event um permit planning process and what that looks like? And then as we think about like incentives to have fireworks or um quiet fireworks that sound like they're similarly polluting, right? The quiet fireworks are similarly polluting. They're just less noisy. Is that right?
That's correct.
Uh thank you. Um so could you just detail that process and then so the cost of the application? If you have fireworks versus if you have like an environmentally friendly alternative, would that cost be the same to the applicant?
So currently, yes, the the cost would be equal uh for someone who uh wanted to do a larger fireworks show or a smaller fireworks show. And the process would be to submit a special event application uh to uh to myself. I. Take all the documentation and I send it out to the special events planning team, which is comprised of. Uh members from across our whole city, including our uh some of our outside agencies, uh the Health Department. Um the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, Sunline Transit, and uh that application is reviewed. Uh cohesively of all the components of a special event and each member of our team responds. Uh to the applicant of what would be required in order to fulfill their event uh successfully and safely. When it comes to fireworks, there's an additional fee that is included through our Palm Springs Fire Department and that fee is five hundred and ninety seven dollars. And that is specific for the permit for fireworks. Uh we do require just naturally from any special event a- and including fireworks show. That their notification has to be provided to neighbors who could be impacted by a special event. It could be parking. It could be sound. Um and if there are fireworks, obviously, we make sure that's an additional uh notice that is put on the notification out to neighbors. And we try to use different avenues of getting that notification out to neighbors so that. You know, if you do happen to miss it in the paper, maybe you caught it on the news or you caught it on some sort of social media component. Um but we do try and make sure that that notification gets blanketed to neighbors uh regarding any special event that could impact them. Uh I I think we could possibly have a conversation about providing some sort of incentive, maybe. Uh a discounted rate if someone wanted to provide uh a smaller fireworks show. Uh I would want to identify what would be considered smaller and I'd be happy to provide counsel with some more detail on. Um the the smaller cylinders and what that size fireworks show, we would need to put some sort of. Limit of maybe it's the three-cylinder fireworks and uh you know, uh for Veterans Day and and July 4th, we could use the six-cylinder fireworks. Um there could, I I would be in favor of trying to provide some sort of incentive. Uh to encourage promoters to utilize uh a a smaller fireworks show, which would be less impactful to residents and uh their animals.
Thanks. That's really helpful. I think there might be a number of policy um opportunities for the council like that. So an incentive for options that don't pollute the environment. I mean, if we want to talk about polluting the environment, we can probably talk about special events using plastic and styrofoam and non-reusables is. Probably one of the most impactful, you know, travel time um cars to get to events. I mean. You know, if we really added up like the environmental impact of events, this might not be the most impactful. That doesn't mean it's not something we might want to mitigate for our community as well as the noise and things like that. So I like that suggestion. I mean. Dennis's motion is different, so I just but I just wanted to um think that through with you, right about, you know, we could. I know we are limited on fees, but um that's quite a low fee for some of these very, very large events that are over a hundred thousand dollar, you know, to produce. Um you know, I wonder if we can consider like mitigation impact fees um for the environmental impact or something like that as well. Um or your idea of an incentive, um or we could put limits, you know, on what type of events or where, like spheres, right? If it's in neighborhoods um or something like that. So I just wanted to think that through. Thank you. Um okay, so I'm sorry, Dennis had a motion. I just want to clarify my position before that happened.
Uh Mayor Protim Garner.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't have anything.
Uh all right. Based on the recommendations from Jasmine, are is there a uh modify uh modification to the uh? Motion from Mr. Uh from council member Woods? Okay, so. Okay, go ahead, please.
You. Can I ask one more question? Jeannie, if we were to put, will the? Devices for tracking the pollution that you identified, would those pick up pollution from fireworks? Like if we put them around events and be able to actually collect data around them?
Yes, and in fact, um there are um monitoring stations already in the city of Palm Springs at residents' um homes. So in your staff report, the last page has um has the the green dots of the numbers and that's the air, the current air quality at the time I printed that screen. So you could go to this website right now and and check out the air quality in these areas and I. Uh it's, I I love data. So this is fascinating to me to to see the numbers, but it's it is something that can be monitored. Uh real time, it could be placed in uh in different areas throughout the city strategically placed near where fireworks would be going off. But yes, it it monitors um all kind, the 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 PM two point five, which is the particulate matter. That i- is uh automobile emissions and um fireworks emissions. So it it monitors different types of particulate matter.
Thank you.
Uh question, uh yes, Mayor Protim Garner.
So I I think that um this has been a frustrating uh discussion over the course of our our meetings. But one thing that I think there is, there has been some interest, I think, for us to move into a different direction than fireworks. Um but I think that. I I mean, I'm interested in providing incentives like council member Holstich said about doing other types of events. I'm also not opposed to maybe phasing them out over time. Um or some other compromise, but I do want to just point out that. Um we are coming out of a time when people weren't able to do a lot of things and there's just. For instance, the power game, they were really excited about getting to do baseball again last year and. Getting to put on the show and they didn't get an opportunity. So I guess I'm I'm really just feeling for these. Organizations that have been doing this for just decades and decades who didn't kind of get a last chance to do this because it was so abrupt. Um and they didn't really get that. Um I don't know, that warning. Um these are, these are big institutional changes and I know that it seems probably to some people like something small. But I think for a lot of residents, it's really important. But I don't also, I also don't want to discount the light show, you know, that we had. I have a cousin. Um who absolutely loved it and said it was better than any fireworks show he's ever been to and he couldn't stop raving about it, you know, and. And this is someone, this is a kid who who did have problems with fireworks in the past. So I'm I don't want to discount. What anyone has been raising or what they've been um or the impacts that it has to people with different needs um and our pets. But I am interested in giving um some kind of a phase out if we're gonna go in that direction. Um and I do know that part of the reason that we came to this initial compromise, which yes, to the public. I think the majority of council thought we had resolved this, so this was a surprise when it had to come back. Um but part of the reason that we came to that compromise, I think, was because. Mayor Middleton had talked to many veterans and we had received lots of calls from veterans saying that the Fourth of July fireworks. Were really important to them. And of course, we did receive some veterans who said, you know, no, don't do it. Um but it's just, it is a divisive issue. There are people really fifty fifty on whether or not this is something that should move forward. Um so I'm not sure if that's something that council would be interested in and kind of um. Doing what staff recommended here and putting up these um. Um monitors and letting some of these events take place one last time and then. Phasing them out. Not sure if that's something that people are interested in.
If I could ask uh the uh council member Woods a clarification question. Uh under the proposal that you're making, uh the uh. Events other than the Veterans Day and Fourth of July would need to be the quiet. Uh or quieter uh fireworks. Is that correct?
That's what I'm proposing because I think that from the complaints that we've heard uh about um. Post-traumatic stress and animals and things of that nature, that it might resolve that issue uh to a degree. And allow some of these events to still have the, you know, kind of the spectacular that kind of defines Palm Springs. It doesn't seem like the pollution is as big of an issue as we thought and with the smaller ones, it might be less. Um so that was, that was the general thinking, but I'm open to the whole council discussion. I am not, you know, I'm not predetermined on anything here, so um I can either withdraw it and somebody else can do it or we can amend it. E- either way, I'm I'm cool.
All right. And uh my other clarification question. Uh are you proposing that for uh these events other than Fourth of July and Veterans Day? That they be ones that staff would uh have authority to uh approve? Or would any of these come back to city council on an individual basis for approval?
I would I would leave that to staff. Um I think the the research that staff has done so far. Um I would leave it to staff. I don't think that we want to burden our council calendar more. And kind of give favoritism to one group over another for whatever reason. Um I do hear council member Core's concern about um small weddings and whatnot and um. If we, if there's a way to limit it, if somebody wants to kind of second it and make a a friendly amendment, I'm open to it.
Uh council member course.
I have a question. Um so coun- council member, I'm Mayor Protim Garner. Um uh so were you suggesting, just I understand it is. We allow the events that have sort of been the standard events for the next year. And then phase out things other than July 4th and Veterans Day thereafter?
Yeah, that's that's kind of what I'm grappling with. Um. I I I think this is going to be an issue that comes up again and again and again if. Um potentially, or it could be with each new council. So I'm not really sure if this is something that's ever gonna resolve completely, but that would, it's just an option.
Council member Holstich.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think um I've been waiting to comment just to hear everyone's side and and opinion and and get all the facts. Um you know, it's hard. I think that we've heard from our community, a significant portion of our community want to phase out and have no more fireworks. Because of the impact on them and their pets and the environment. Um and so, you know, I don't think, you know, taking this vote, probably fireworks are not going to be around for a long time. You know, in ten, fifteen years, I. I just can't imagine that really it's the way of the future. Um but it is like, you know, it's it's a. Harken back to the past in the Fourth of July and our country's founding. But it is like, you know, it's, it's a hearken back to the past in the Fourth of July and our country's founding, all the war and all these things, right? And so um, I, I, you know, I'm just in this place where I, I support Councilmember Woods's proposal. Um, I was hesitant, you know, I'm happy to second it. It sounds like there's some third vote out there that needs to be decided. Um, and so I don't know if that would be Mayor Pro Tim Garner, what your friendly amendment would be to that motion um, to approve it. It sounded like you said, you know, an ultimate phasing out. Um, I'm open to that, um, but I don't think we have heard from all stakeholders. I totally agree with your comments about COVID. It'd be sad to take away, you know, seniors have gone through so much, high school seniors. You know, and if they've looked forward to that homecoming game and the fireworks for years and then they don't have it, and that's just something that we chose to take away in addition to everything they've lost, you know, that doesn't sit right with me. Same with Palm Springs Power, other opportunities for the community to come together. So um, that's why I had a hard time, especially with this vote in these times. But so I, I'm open to the proposal that Councilmember Woods put out. You know, I don't think it gets us fully to the environmental impacts, and that was why I was exploring like incentives or or mitigation or things like that. Um, but I, I support the motion as it is, and um, I would also support, you know, amendments to that if, if we wanted to analyze it. I'm really excited about actually the opportunity to track the data um, and really analyze it and, and have the opportunity to say, wow, you know, this is polluting our city this much or our air. And the, all that, and to know that impact, I think, would be really interesting for us to have more data to go on.
Can we just get the motion repeated one more time?
Certainly. Uh, what I have is to implement the monitoring program. And then one year of quieter fireworks for the other events, uh, not including uh, Veterans Day and Fourth of July with no limit, uh, subject to staff approval of the permit. And then uh, Fourth of July and Veterans Day would be uh, subject to the full fireworks show.
Okay, thank you. And, and as far as we know, we don't even know necessarily if all of these events will move. Well, I think we, we've heard from Power Baseball, it sounds like they will, would move forward if they could, but we don't know about the others other than White Party that has an application in right now.
That's correct. Those two agencies have um, reached out to us uh, and requested to do fireworks in the, the spring.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, is there further discussion? So just set the record, uh, I will be voting uh, no uh, on uh, this. Uh, I appreciate the direction that uh, is being proposed with additional monitoring limiting uh, to one year. But uh, the uh, these are, these are only quieter fireworks. And the impacts particularly on pets is real. Uh, it's dramatic. Uh, and uh, in other communities where fireworks are shot off uh, mu- much farther away from residences uh, that uh, it uh, it has significantly less impact, but I appreciate where my colleagues are coming from. And sometimes we just have differences of opinion over uh, issues and we've talked, we've talked this one through. So, uh, Councilmember Corse.
I'll, I'll echo those as well. I appreciate the conversation, but I do have a question, um, since this would allow more than the events that regularly happen, uh, if people wanted to do that. So what are, what are the rules on people doing them at a wedding, you know, and in, and around a residential neighborhood? Where even quieter is going to be very loud?
So depending on the size of the firework, depends on the fallout zone, which um, obviously higher fireworks have a larger radius of a fallout zone. So you can't have any uh, buildings near homes, uh, commercial buildings near or within, within the fallout zone. So there are restrictions in terms of what size firework would be allotted in a residential area. So the golf course has um, not as large of fireworks because it is closer to some residential and uh, some hotels. However, the area that we utilize for July Fourth is set back, so the fallout zone falls closer to the high schools uh, baseball fields. So it's an open area and, and the pavilion parking lot. So the fallout zone is in that area. So it's not near any building. So there are some restrictions in terms of the allowance of really large fireworks in any sort of residential or commercial area where there are buildings.
By golf course, did you mean O'Donnell?
Correct.
So.
So we utilize O'Donnell for both Veterans Day and uh, Evening Under the Stars utilizes fireworks at the O'Donnell Golf Course.
And because of the small out zone, are those considered the, the quieter fireworks?
They're the smaller ones, yes. And it also is in proximity to where they're set off. So um, you know, if they are set off, say closer to the Hyatt, um, those would be smaller. The Veterans Day fireworks take place right in the center of O'Donnell Golf Course, so it has a larger fallout zone. Evening Under the Stars takes place closer to, say, the clubhouse. And they are smaller fireworks in comparison to Veterans Day.
Okay, just cause some, one of the comments was on, on the noise was tied to Veterans Day. Someone who said sort of um, Alahou, you know, uh, between Indian and, and El Segundo. So those were, those were not smaller. Those were larger for Veterans Day, the golf course.
Definitely not as large as July Fourth. Um, I do believe the largest one we have for Veterans Day is a four inch. And um, for July Fourth, I'm close. I'm pretty sure we have about a seven. So um, not as large as July Fourth, but larger than Evening Under the Stars.
Okay. So so folks understand um, the noise factor of the smaller ones. Thank you.
Uh, there is no further discussion. Uh, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, I, I don't have a second for the motion.
I, is there a second for the motion? My apology.
I'll second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Corse.
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Middleton.
No.
Motion passes three to two.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, my colleagues, and uh, and I appreciate uh, the, the manner in which we carried on this discussion this evening, and I'm sure that this issue will be back, but uh, thank you all. And most particularly, uh, Jeannie Jasmine, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move on to item five A, which is the Community Development Block Grant. CDVG twenty twenty-two, twenty-three Annual Action Plan and Budget Discussion. Uh, staff report, please. Mr. Verada.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim and council members, uh, it's that time again where uh, we are required to start discussing the annual action plan and budget for next year's CDVG appropriation. Uh, this is a requirement by the Housing and Urban Development Department HUD uh, and uh, which requires us to prepare this annual action plan for HUD review before commencing with next year's program activities. And uh, so tonight, we'd like to discuss uh, potential projects for next year's CDVG funds, and we're estimating that amount will be four hundred and thirty thousand dollars uh, as the allocation for the city. This is subject to change. This is based on the amount we received last year, which was actually four hundred thirty-one thousand. So uh, again, subject to change, depending on the allocation from CDVG, from HUD, and as we've seen over the past couple of years, HUD has been making a lot of changes to their allocations, particularly with the CDVG uh, COVID funding that they provided the city. However, uh, we do not anticipate that type of COVID funding uh, being provided uh, for next year. So um, with that, uh, you know, we do have a twenty percent statutory allocation for administrative costs and twenty percent of four hundred thirty thousand is approximately eighty-six thousand dollars. We also have a fifteen percent public service allocation uh, which would result in about sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars. And the balance is typically used for uh, public facilities and capital improvements, which we anticipate to be in the amount of two hundred seventy-nine, five hundred dollars. Again, uh, totaling four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. You may recall that uh, a couple of years ago, the council voted to use what's referred to as Model Three, which enables the city council to select projects uh, from uh, to be implemented from city-sponsored events as opposed to uh, soliciting projects from uh, from the general public. So we've been proceeding with this. And as you can see, uh, previous allocations have gone towards DeMuth Park for uh, air conditioning systems and restrooms and to Sunrise Park, also for uh, improvements there. Uh, and so in line with uh, those types of improvements for next year, we're seeing opportunities in, in coordination with the city's uh, engineering department for shade shelters over the parks in Baristo Park and at uh, DeMuth Park. These are parks within low, moderate income areas. Uh, of course, the council may want to deliberate a little bit and decide if there are other programs that might be eligible for the CDVG fund expenditures. We do hope to be able to come back to you with the draft annual action plan at the next council meeting on uh, March tenth to provide you with um, uh, what the plan would look like and initiate having that plan uh, reviewed during a thirty-day public review process. Afterwards, uh, at the April twenty-first meeting, we would like to uh, adopt that plan. Of course, taking into consideration all the comments that come in in regards to the plan. And soon after that, submit that to HUD for their review and program implementation. Well, I want to say soon after that, uh, but uh, you know, it's um, sometimes it takes a while to get the uh, funding letters submitted uh, from the federal government to us directly. And so that uh, is basically the overview of what's being requested tonight. Uh, so your consideration for uh, the, the uh, shade project is, is being requested. Also listed is the possibility of using the funds for the navigation center. However, given that the navigation center uh, still has to go through so many phases of design, I, I think the opportunities for allocation to a navigation center, if we do ultimately, might be better for next year's uh, annual action plan consideration. So uh, with that, please, uh, any questions you have, I'm happy to answer.
Mayor Pro Tim Garner.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Jay. Um, I'm wondering when we're going to get the new census map? Do you know when that will, will get to us and when we'll start designating money based on a new map?
I have been checking that website, uh, preparing this staff report, and uh, they still have the older uh, data on, on the federal website. So I just want to make sure I get the correct map uh, from HUD, but we do not have that yet. But that would be very useful information. Keeping in mind, however, if the funds are used to serve uh, seventy percent of the clientele being low, moderate income, it does not have to be limited to being within a low, moderate income area. In fact, the uh, navigation center is across the street from a low-income, moderate area, low, moderate income area. And so uh, given that the clientele there will very likely be uh, more than seventy percent low, moderate income, it would be an eligible use of funds there.
Okay, thank you. The reason I bring it up is because we've had, you know, some areas where we haven't been able to do some improvements because of the way that the, the map is. And so I'm, I'm just anxious to kind of get that new data to see if our outreach efforts worked and we have a better sense, because we do know that there are some areas in our um, city that are low to moderate income, which we know from other um, data tracking, but there's first, for whatever reason, not in the listed as CDVG um, appropriate. So I, I just wanted to flag that because I know, for instance, um, the James O. Jesse mural that's on the side of the gym, it needs improvement. Um, but that's technically not an eligible area um, under our, our current map. So that's just one of those things that I wanted to point out for the public. But then also wanted to point out what um, was said before about how difficult the CDVG fi- money is to actually dole out and process. And so um, I'm, I'm supportive of kind of fu- funding these city projects since the city can better process this and then be able to allocate in our budgeting process other projects, uh, so that we don't put that burden of accepting CDVG funds on, on providers who, who really don't need that extra um, work. So I, I'm, I'm just supportive of this general direction.
Uh, Councilmember Holstich, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Mayor Pro Tem's comments. I like the direction of um, having these be uh, city projects, especially because so many are needed and there's so much work to do and really appreciate the council's decision um, on, on what we've achieved so far in the last year with the bathroom projects and um, the investments we've made. So um, that's really exciting. So uh, Jay, so your recommendation is not to fund the navigation center at this time with this round of funds? And then do you have an alternative to fund? I'm sorry if I missed that.
Well, uh, council member, the navigation center uh, right now, the funding for the navigation center, it, the majority of which for the capital improvements is the is the application we have in to the state for Home Key Two Funds that would potentially pay for all the uh, improvements needed to get the navigation center in shape for operations. And for the operations, uh, we had allocated the remaining HHAP funds, the uh, half ten million dollars to help operate the facility after it's completed. And of course, uh, as we had discussed a couple of meetings ago, uh, the County of Riverside had covered the cost of the acquisition of the property.
Sorry, so what's the alternative then?
The alternative, the primary funding source is the Home Key Two Funds for the navigation center.
Sorry, so if we're taking out the navigation center, what are we substituting in? I say, Mr. Clifton.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's so late. We've been meeting for such a long time. I'm extremely, you know, I'm still covering, so sorry.
No, I, I'm sorry. I, I misunderstood. The entire amount would be allocated for the shade structures.
Oh, okay. That was a basic fact I probably missed in your presentation. Um, okay, thank you. I support that. Um, I'm really excited to see the investments we're making in playgrounds and our parks and our community centers. And what a great way to spend this money. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Are there any other questions or comments? Mayor Protem Garner.
One thing I just wanted to raise, since we're talking about shade, is the possibility of using some of these funds to also fill in our bus shelters that don't have shade. I know I've been talking to Mayor Middleton about this for a while. And we, we have a map that shows where the different areas, which bus stops don't have shade. And there are some gaps, like more significant gaps. And I know that there are some bus stops that are actually have trees over them, so they wouldn't need it. But, but that's something that if, I know this is going to come back to us again. I'm just curious kind of what that cost would be for us to, to put up shade structures, especially in some of those long strips. For instance, Vistacino has, I think, two or three, that there's just nothing there and it's completely exposed.
And go ahead. Let me just jump in. Yes, Mayor Protem Garner and I have had some conversations on that. And I'm hopeful that as we move into the budget for fiscal year 2022, '23, that we have an opportunity to take a look at some strategic installations of shelters over our bus stops. And thank you, Councilmember Woods, for letting me jump in.
Yeah, certainly. It's the same thing. I have asked for our bus stops to be evaluated in the update to the general plan because we have a hodgepodge of bus stops out there. And sometimes, as the mayor knows, well, Sunline will change where bus stops are. And we need, you know, and if we have permanent ones that are on cement stilts, we can't just unbolt it and move it. And the new bus stops that Sunline has actually specified have all of the elements that you need for a good bus stop. And I know when developers come in and they have a bus stop next to it and, and there's enough, enough building going on that they can put a bus stop in, that happens. But I, I applaud it. And I think we absolutely need to look at our bus stops holistically in the city to make mass transit more usable for everybody.
Councilmember Holstich.
Can you just explain for me, since I'm, this is new to me? So I thought that Sunline maintained the bus stops and is responsible for the lines, obviously, about where, which bus stops are used and how frequently. I know that when we approve development projects, right, then we may approve a bus stop to be, you know, built along with it and things like that. But so you could sort of explain for me? I'm not opposed to improving the bus stops that are so needed. I remember the one that we used to go to Roy's and it was like 50 people standing out in the sun. It was horrible to see and for people to experience. But can you just explain the law and sort of the jurisdiction and how the improvements of the bus stops work? Or if we're not discussing that today, can we get some information about that for next time when we do discuss it?
Maybe since I'm representative to Sunline, I could help on that. Sunline is responsible for the bus stops. There's not a requirement that all bus stops be covered. And throughout the Coachella Valley, there are numerous number of bus stops that are not covered. There are also a number that are. Sunline has a priority list of bus stops that as they are able to have the funding, that they want to install covers on. And those priority lists are developed based on the ridership and the number of people that are at each stop. It is also possible for individual municipalities who want to jumpstart the process to make an investment in covering the bus stops. And we've done that historically in Palm Springs. Most of our bus stops are ones that Sunline did the covering, but some are ones that we have done it here in Palm Springs. And in fairness to everyone across the valley, if someone, if a city wants to jump the line, it's, it's appropriate that that city be the responsible party for paying for that jumping.
Thanks. It's really helpful. I appreciate all your work on Sunline. You learn something every day, even after five years. I don't get to be involved in Sunline's operations, so thank you. I think that's really important and to Councilmember Woods's point, you know, as we think about climate resiliency and we talked about heat islands and really how to, how, you know, tree coverage, how we have so many palms that really don't provide real shade for, you know, bus stops or sidewalks or things like that. I think that's why the, obviously, the shade structures at the playground are so important and would love to have us think more holistically, yeah, about how we can make these types of investments. Can I just ask a question before I turn the floor over for the shade structures or the playgrounds? Do you know yet, or it would probably come back, I'm sure, when we order the work? But I've seen that we've added some that are sort of like small, little flags, triangular, triangular flags, which are beautiful. And then I've seen other cities have really, really large shade structures that provide more shade and are less beautiful. I was just wondering if we could look at that, sort of like the usability of really providing shade? Because what we hear from parents and families is that it's just, it's so hot to use our playgrounds the majority of the year. And the, the most useful element here really is the amount of shade provided. I think that would be helpful to look at. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So do we have a motion?
So the motion is to move, move, move the item forward with shade structure, structures being preference, correct?
Yeah.
How about that? All set.
All right. We have a motion and second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Corse.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
We have previously addressed item 5B. That will take us to item 5C. Appeal of the Historic Site Preservation Board Action Approving a Certificate of Appropriateness for Alterations to Palm Springs City Hall, a Class One Landmark Historic Site Located at 3200 East Tuckwitz Canyon Way, Removal of the Frank Bogart Statue. Can we have a staff report, please?
Madam Mayor and members of council, the item that you have before you this evening is an appeal of the Historic Site Preservation Board Decision to Issue a Certificate of Appropriateness for the removal of the Bogart statue from the City Hall site. Let me go ahead and start PowerPoint presentation. So as we talk about the appeal, I want to just give a little bit of background on the process for a certificate of appropriateness and why that is required for the Bogart statue. Pursuant to the municipal code and specifically Chapter 8.05, which deals with historic preservation, it dictates that any alterations or demolition of a Class One or Class Two historic resource must have a certificate of appropriateness approved by the Historic Site Preservation Board. In terms of the City Hall site, it is a Class One historic site. City Hall was originally designated back in 1996. As has been mentioned in public testimony this evening, that designation was further clarified or expanded in 2012 to include the City Hall site. And so not only is it just the City Hall building, but the site is designated as a Class One historic resource. I want to make that clear. Staff is not saying that the Bogart statue is not part of the City Hall site. It definitely is part of the site. However, in terms of talking about a Class One historic resource, we did ask A R G, the city's historic resource consultant, one of several that we have on call, to do an assessment of the site relative to defining contributing elements as well as character-defining features. That is something that was not specifically studied or done as part of the 1996 or 2012 designations. As part of that, the Bogart statue was determined by A R G not to be a contributing element as it's not part of the original construction, nor was it part of the period of significance, which was 1957 to 1965. Now, that is not to say that it is not an important element of the site. Just to give you an example, the 1985 addition of the Development Services Wing is also defined by our consultant as not being a contributing element because it's outside the period of significance. That being said, regardless of whether or not it's a contributing element, the code does require where a site has been designated that we must make a finding relative to a certificate of appropriateness, any impacts to the historic resource. And so for that reason, that's what staff did when we received the direction from council to proceed with consideration of the removal of the statue. The appeal that has been filed makes three points. The appellant asserts that, number one, the city did not follow the municipal code in approving the certificate of appropriateness. Number two, that the issuance of the certificate of appropriateness violates SEQA. And number three, that federal and state laws, and more specifically, the California Arts Protection Act prohibits removal of the statue. And so let me address those three assertions. First of all, relative to the process for the certificate of appropriateness, the appellant is stating that the city did not make the required findings. There are four findings that the Historic Site Preservation Board must make in order to issue a certificate of appropriateness. The first one is that the proposed alteration does not materially impair the character-defining features. Again, this is why the report from the city's consultant is important in this discussion in that it identifies the character-defining features and also evaluates what removal of the statue would do to the site. The evaluation that's provided, both in the staff report and in the report from the consultant, is that removal of the statue would restore the site back to its original condition during its period of significance. And so consequently, the finding that was made by the Historic Site Preservation Board is that removal of the statue does not materially impair the character-defining features. Secondly, another finding that must be made is that the proposed alteration will assist in the restoration of the historic resource. As previously stated, removal of the statue would restore the City Hall back to its period of significance. And so therefore, that finding was made. The next two findings are not materially significant to the discussion. The third criterion that we use to evaluate is that any proposed additions are consistent. The application relative to the removal of the statue does not propose any additions. And so therefore, there is no finding that needs to be made there. And then the final criterion is that any federally funded projects must be consistent with the Secretary of the Interior standards for historic preservation. The removal of the statue is not a federally funded project. And so on that basis, the Historic Site Preservation Board made the finding that the proposed alteration would not materially impair the site and was consistent with the criteria necessary for issuance of the certificate of appropriateness. Going on to the next question relative to approval of the certificate of appropriateness is a violation under SEQA. The finding that has to be made relative to SEQA is that the statue would not cause a substantial adverse change to the historic resource. Again, going back to our report and the character-defining features, the analysis that has been made is that removal of the statue will not result in a substantial adverse change. And so consequently, the actual process of removing the statue would help to restore the site and therefore does not cause an adverse change. And so that is our response to that assertion. Moving on to the final point relative to the removal of the statue being a violation of the California Art Preservation Act. In the language of the act, it says that we cannot deface, mutilate, alter, or destroy the artwork. That is not what is being proposed here. The artwork is proposed to be moved either to a new location or to be stored. And under that proposal, it is not a violation of the act. This is further supported by recent case law, the case of Schmidt versus the City and County of San Francisco, where a public artwork was removed from a public site and stored. It was found that that was consistent with the act and therefore not a violation. Similarly, removal of the Bogart statue for storage or relocation to another site is not a violation of that act. So for conclusion relative to the appeal, number one, the appropriate findings were made for issuance of the certificate of appropriateness. One of the other things I wanted to add in terms of that discussion, going back to the 2012 modification to the historic designation of the site, since this was referenced earlier in public testimony, it specifically states in the approving resolution from 2012, that's Resolution Number 23016, that no permit for alteration of the interior or exterior of any building or the steps or entry plaza fronting them or the hardscape of the parking lot areas, including any and all properties, elements, and characteristics within the designated area, shall be issued without prior approval of the Historic Site Preservation Board pursuant to the requirements of Chapter 8.05. Basically, what is that is saying is that any alteration to the site, including the removal of the statue, must be done under a certificate of appropriateness approved by the Historic Site Preservation Board. I wanted to clarify that fact, that the certificate of appropriateness is the proper method to do that. It is not to go back to the city council and modify the historic designation of the site. And so again, the certificate of appropriateness and the necessary findings were made by the Historic Site Preservation Board, and the appropriate process was followed. We also find that the action does not violate SEQA. It does not violate the California Arts Protection Act. And based on those factors, staff recommends that the city council uphold the Historic Site Preservation Board and deny the appeal. Madam Mayor, that concludes my presentation, and we are more than happy to respond to any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for, from council for staff? And I want to emphasize again, this is a time for questions, not for comments. Councilmember Corse.
I think there are more comments, so, since it's not a public hearing. But I can wait if there are questions from others first.
Yeah. Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you, Flynn. Appreciate your staff report. I have a, I have a question. We heard a number of things in public comments that I think are not true. And I just wanted to ask staff sort of respond. So we heard some legal claims. I don't know if Jeff Ballinger would be the, the correct person to answer these question, that question. But we heard some legal claims. We heard characterization of the past city council action, you know, designating the site, you know, that, those types of claims. So could you just give a general response to some of the, the claims that you heard in public comment? And, you know, I want to know if they're accurate, too.
So let me start first with questions about the 2012 action by the city council. As I had mentioned in my presentation, the 2012 action by city council was to modify the historic designation. the two thousand twelve action by city council was to modify the historic designation of City Hall to include not only the City Hall building, but the City Hall site as well. There was a proviso in there relative to the landscape materials not being part of that designation. Um, one of the things that I want to point out is that the statue itself was not an individual designation. It is an element on the site and is considered as such, and I hope I pointed that out earlier in the presentation. So just wanted to clarify that the statue is not individually designated, but it is part of the site. And so yes, the assertions that were made there are correct. In terms of how you deal with that, that is one of the reasons why I mentioned the ARG report and the analysis by staff relative to what are contributing elements versus non-contributing elements and the period of significance. Uh, and so that hopefully helps to clarify some of the points that were made there. Um, I, there were a number of other comments that were made and uh, council member Holstich, if you might just point out what those were, I'd be happy to respond to those. Uh, I'll apologize for not remembering all of them right now.
Thank you. That was a thorough response. I appreciate it. Um, and that's what I was referring to and city attorney, if I could just ask the same uh general uh question to you if, if you might uh reply.
Sure. I think, I think uh staff did a very good job of responding to that um factual uh inaccuracy um that was, that was made earlier. Um, there were other factual statements made that, you know, I think staff um w- w- would respond to. I think there were a number of um assertions made in the appeal relative to the artistic value of the statue. Um, you know, as, as the staff indicates, this is not about the artistic value of the uh, of the statue. It's about its historical significance relative to the City Hall and its period of, of significance. Um, with regard to the, you know, threats of, of lawsuit, um, obviously staff has worked closely with the city attorney's office, uh, both at the HSPB level as well as the appeal level. Um, I believe staff's uh recommendation is supported by the law and the findings could be made by both the HSPB as well as the city council. Uh, I know Mr. Pacheco is going to be heard from here shortly, um, and probably has different uh legal opinion, but uh, that, that is my uh opinion. That's what I would render to the city.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for staff? Uh, I have a couple, uh, and uh Flynn, I'd like to start with you. Uh, uh, Don Mills uh read uh former council member uh Chris Mills uh letter to us uh in which uh he certainly asserted uh that uh the two thousand twelve action did incorporate the uh statue into uh the uh uh design, stark designation for the uh entire site. Uh, could you, I think you somewhat responded, but could you directly respond to uh the point that uh, that he raised and I thought raised well?
So it goes back to what are the contributing elements versus what are not. I, I don't think it's a question that in the two thousand twelve action, the entire City Hall site, the objects on the site were included as part of the designation. But going back to our historic preservation ordinance, which was updated in twenty eighteen, uh, and our practice currently relative to historic designation, uh, it's important that you identify when you have a site, what are the contributing elements versus those that are not. And that's especially important when you have a site uh that has been added to over the years. Uh, consequently, it's important to identify a period of significance. Uh, just to give a point of comparison, we had an item earlier on today's agenda uh where there was a designation of a residence. Uh, in the resolution approving the designation, it clearly points out what are the contributing features versus those that are not. And so that guides decisions in terms of how we consider alterations to that property in the future. In a similar fashion, it's important to take into account uh, the City Hall site, its contributing elements as we look at any alterations to that site.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ballinger, uh, couple of questions for you. Back on September twenty ninth, we had a special uh city council meeting to discuss the threshold question as to whether or not the statue should remain in front of uh City Hall. And city council uh made a decision that evening. Uh, the matter then went to the Historic Site Preservation Board uh for them to follow up uh with uh decisions that they needed to make in order to be able to move forward with the decision that was made on September twenty nine. Uh, am I correct that the only issue uh in, well, we all know that there are larger uh questions that are here, the only issue that is before city council this evening is the issue as to whether or not to accept or deny uh the appeal uh from the, of the decision of the Historic Site Preservation Board.
Madam Mayor, that's absolutely correct. Um, that the, the issues before the city council tonight are, are fairly limited. There, there are those few findings that uh Mr. Fag indicated in his presentation relative to the character defining elements of this um, of this historic site and how those then interact with the CEQA findings. Um, again, it, it's the, the, the issues before you uh really uh aren't about section fourteen or the artistic value or the, the, you know, the, the qualifications of the artist who provided the the statue. It's really the historical significance of, of this feature and whether the City Hall's historic designation would be impacted by the removal.
Okay, thank you. And all of us on council recognize that uh uh for in the hearts and minds of uh our residents, the issues do go broader. Uh, but we as a council have to stick to uh what is actually in front of us uh to be decided. Uh, are there other que, any other questions or comments before I give this to the applicant? Uh, council member, of course.
This isn't a public hearing, right?
No, it is not.
So is the applicant speaking? I just want to understand the process.
Uh, Mr. Ballinger, could you uh step in regarding the process?
Yes, so our uh municipal code does not designate this as a public hearing. Um, however, as the appellant, uh, I've advised the city that uh Mr. Pacheco uh should be entitled to five minutes to give his presentation as part of his.
Okay, so then co, the comments probably should wait till after that, if that's your preference, Mayor, so I will wait till after that. Thank you.
I, I think it would be more appropriate. Uh, Mr. Pacheco, welcome, and uh you have five minutes and uh we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, the mayor and city council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I, I lament to some degree that I only have five minutes. I heard a lot of discussions about other issues tonight. I'm sure all very important to your constituents, but that were much more significant in time allocation than what has been allocated to me. Uh, as you know, I represent Mrs. Frank Bogart and the friends of Mayor Frank Bogart, Palm, Palm Springs City residents. We have filed an appeal of the Historic Site Preservation Board's unlawful decision that they made on February first, granting a certificate of appropriateness for the removal of the Frank Bogart statue. We filed an eighteen page letter detailing the law and the facts in uh our appeal. This is very detailed, very legal, and quite a bit of facts. But you know, to distill this in the time that I have allotted, this is a very simple issue. Unfortunately, it's been contorted by staff in its preparation of a report to the HSPB and also to the city council. Now, y- you have to ask yourself, why would someone do that? Well, the fact of the matter is someone did that because the basis for the removal of the statue had to be concealed. The real motivation for the removal of the statue was not a legal justification. Political correctness and cancel culture are not a basis found in the Palm Springs Municipal Code for the removal or alteration of a historic resource. So they had to find something and create something, and unfortunately, they didn't do it very well. And quite frankly, it's not based on the law and it's certainly not based on facts. The staff report unfortunately conceals the real motivation and quite frankly, it wasn't even mentioned in the HSPB report. This issue arose from the complaints of people from the, from the uh citizens of Palm Springs based on the legacy of Mr. Bogart. Nobody complained about whether or not the statue fit in with the architecture. No one's ever complained about that. That came from the staff itself, much like they created this phrase, the period of significance. That's not found in the Palm Springs Municipal Code. That's a concocted phrase used by staff as part of the facade they created. The, America is a nation of laws. The law, as it relates in Palm Springs Municipal Code, is that only the city council can designate a historic resource. Staff can't do it. An individual council member can't do it. No offense. Uh, mayor, uh, but the mayor can't do it. No one can do it. Only the city council majority can designate something as a historic resource. In this particular instance, the facts show very clearly that the statue was there when the two resolutions were in fact passed by the majority of the city council. Nineteen ninety, the statue was erected, built, constructed, and placed at City Hall. In nineteen ninety six, the first resolution dealing with City Hall and its site and its features was passed by the city council. There was no exception in that resolution to whether or not the statue was included, but certainly the council knew that it was there. In two thousand and twelve, again, the city council amended that resolution and passed another resolution. Interestingly, council member Chris Mills, at the time, voted against this resolution. And I'll mention that and I'll get to that point in a second. But let me read you the resolution because this piece has been absent from uh the reports you've received, the long presentation you just heard from. Uh, staff did not bother to read it to you because it creates a problem. And this is quoting from the resolution that was passed. The City Council of the City of Palm Springs resolve section one, the class one historic designation for the Palm Springs City Hall is hereby amended to include the structures, features, and land of that portion of APN number five oh two dash one five oh dash zero zero five, bounded by the north edge of the north parking lot and the curb edges along Civic Drive, Tocqueens Canyon Way, and El Cielo Road, accepting the landscape plant materials therein. This resolution that was passed nearly unanimously included the features and structures of this designated area, the designated area surrounded by three streets. The statue sits directly in the middle of that designated area and is both by definition a structure and a feature. The resolution went on to mention that all existing or previously approved or installed alterations or improvements shall be consi, considered acceptable and consistent with the requirements of chapter eight point oh five of the Palm Springs Municipal Code. Eight oh five defines what a historic resource is, so that sentence essentially says that any existing improvements at the time of this resolution are in fact historic resources.
Madam Mayor, just to let you know that five minutes has elapsed.
May I continue?
Mr. Pacheco, uh, can you finish uh up, please?
There's no question that from the resolution itself, the language is clear. But we also know from council member Chris Mills that they discussed the addition of the statue as a historic resource and the council passed it, even though he voted against that resolution. What's the meaning of this? And the meaning of this is because the statue is part of the historic resource and in fact is a historic resource, is that the council has to meet the criteria. An alteration or removal of that statue does not advance that historic resource. The criteria which the council must meet and the, and the HSPB must meet are not satisfied as identified. In addition to that, there is no exemption for historic resource under CEQA. There needs to be an environmental impact report. None has been prepared. In fact, the city claims that there is an exemption, even though the law states otherwise. The bottom line, if I may conclude, Mayor. The bottom line is, having served in public office myself in the past, the public of America, and I assume in Palm Springs, has a great desire for truth in that, in, in what government does. And if you want to get rid of the statue because you think he's not politically correct or there's a cancel culture attack on Mayor Bogart, then do that. But just contort, comport the law, make sure it's followed. In this instance, the law was not followed in a variety of ways. So unfortunately, I didn't have more time, but Mayor, I do appreciate you giving me extra time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are there questions from count, uh, from city council, from Mr. Pacheco? Uh, council member, of course.
Mr. Pacheco, did you watch the, the two discussions of this when the resolution was first discussed on September fifteenth of twenty twelve? Or the March seventh, when the resolution was actually voted on, on pa, and passed?
I'm fami, I'm familiar with the discussions of council members and the reason for those that.
Did you, I just, yeah, I asked you, I asked you a question. Did you watch the video?
I, I didn't.
Yes or no?
Sure, I didn't have a chance to answer your question. I'm familiar with the comments that were made, and yes, I did watch the comments made during those resolutions, and I did see them. And, and, and so I'm familiar that the basis for the removal of the statue has nothing to do with the nineteen fifty seven and nineteen sixty five uh additions to City Hall. It has, even though staff claims at this point that that's the real basis for the removal. That's not correct.
I have no more questions because you're gonna use it to continue to talk about other things. I asked a yes or no question. Thank you for your answer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Coors.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Pacheco? Mr. Pacheco, thank you for your time.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all right. Uh, we will now move to uh city council member comments. Uh, Mr. Coors. Council member Coors, excuse me.
Oh, good. Thank you. Uh, so I did today watch both meetings fully and I've um have email correspondence uh with council member Mills I have great respect with. Um, and the statute was not discussed despite several people saying it was um during this. It was a discussion about parking and uh council member Mills noted that the parking had been uh changed, so he did not support including that. And landscaping, which they decided should not have to go back to HSPB. So many people said it was um discussed and specifically called out, but it wasn't. It's not in the resolution and it was not in, at either of those meetings um on the video. So I do want to correct that. In addition, council member Foat, uh, with my support, actually asked the Public Arts Commission to review relocating the statue in either twenty sixteen or seventeen because it was inappropriate, given um the style for the historic uh City Hall building. So that had been brought up before. The Arts Commission um sent it back to council. Uh, so it had been discussed before, so I just want to correct uh the record on those two things. Also, uh, I think um the answer on the process that uh council, uh, former council member Mills raised uh what the right process is um was answered uh already, uh, which is that under our current law, which was amended in twenty eighteen after council member Mills left, so he may not be um up to speed on that. I don't know whether he is or not. The site was expanded to uh the border, uh, but this was not listed as a contributing factor and it wasn't excluded. And because it wasn't excluded, if this was landscaping, it wouldn't go back to HSPB as I understand it and um Director Fag can uh weigh in. But because this was on the expanded site that was adopted in twenty twelve, um, it did have to go back to HSPB. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, council member Coors, that is accurate. If it were not included as part of the site, then there would be no certificate of appropriateness required. However, it is part of the site and so consequently, the certificate of appropriateness was required.
Right. And so that was um the right process, not amending the site designation, since it wasn't listed specifically as a.
That's correct, and that's both in chapter eight point oh five of the municipal code as well as in the twenty twelve ordinance as a condition of approval. And they are consistent.
Thank you. Uh, so in reading the report, it seems uh clear to me that the proper process was followed. Um, and, uh, that, uh, justifications and findings, uh, made by HSPB are appropriate. Uh, I have no other comments. Thank you, man.
All right. Are there any other comments? From any member of council? Uh, Mr. Pacheco, uh, we've, we've enjoyed having you. The, uh, there aren't rebuttals then, and so it is an appropriate time for you to, uh, turn off your screen, uh, and but, uh, you certainly will continue to be, uh, able to watch all of us. I'm sorry, sir, uh, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, uh, Mayor. I didn't know I was on mute. Um, I was told by the city attorney that I had two minutes in rebuttal and that's in an email he sent me, actually today.
Mr. Ballinger, uh, can you comment, please?
The email, uh, reads staff report, initial questions and clarifications by the city council. Appellant, who is Mr. Pacheco, gets five minutes and then counsel deliberations, possible action. It does not include any rebuttal because there was no public hearing.
If I might have a moment, uh, Mayor. Yes, you may. Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, I saw it in an email, uh, from Mr. Ballinger. Uh, but, you know, I think it's been, it's been covered, Mayor, and I appreciate your forbearance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So you want me out?
To turn off the video, sir, and, uh, but I'm sure we will see each other again.
You, you have, I assume you have less desire than others to have me out. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Uh, are there other, uh, comments that, uh, members of council would like to make? Uh, council member Coors.
Sure, just, um, given some public comment, just want to note that, um, the reason, uh, it had to go to HSPB is the law, right? So even though we made our recommendation, there's a process that we had to legally go through, uh, and I, I just want the public to understand that. And, you know, I do think, uh, as we move forward and, you know, set some dates and timing, um, and how we move forward after this is, is going to be important. So just want to share that.
Uh, let me add a comment, uh, that, uh, and it begins with the question that I asked Mr. Ballinger just a little bit earlier. Uh, we're here this evening on a very limited matter and that is the question of whether or not to, uh, grant the appeal or deny the appeal from the HSPB. The broader issues regarding, uh, uh, the statue are issues that we addressed on September twenty-nine. Uh, there are, uh, we know that those issues are never going to go away and that there are going to be strong feelings on both sides that of, uh, those issues, uh, for as far as any of us can take and see. Uh, once we move past this evening, uh, the next question that will arise is, uh, determining, uh, if at all possible, a location, uh, for the statue. Uh, any of us who sat and listened to the public comments this evening know what a challenge that is going to be. Uh, but, uh, it is my hope uh, that we can, as a community, meet that challenge and find a place that works reasonably well for the large, uh, for most people in our community. Uh, there, uh, none of us are under any illusion that we will ever get to a location that works for everyone. Uh, are there any other comments from anyone? Then I think it's time for a motion and a, and a vote. Uh, council member Coors.
Um, sure. So I would move to deny the appeal, um, and to authorize the city manager to work with stakeholders. All stakeholders who are interested on a location, uh, to move the statue. And if in sixty days there's no acceptable location to, um, carefully remove it into storage, um, until such time as there is, uh, a location for it and to do no damage, uh, to the statue. Um, in addition to extend, uh, the statute of limitations for the appellant, to file a lawsuit, um, as has been threatened in public comment, um, an additional thirty days to that sixty days um, in order to try and find a location.
Please, sir, second for that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Like to comment if I can. Um, I support staff's recommendations. Staff has been extremely thorough on this item. Um, city staff, uh, brought this to HSPB, I believe, three times. Is that right? Um, it's been, and, and to, to do a thorough review of this item. I'm just sort of railing from Mr. Pacheco's argument. Um, he, he walked in and blamed city staff um, to, calling them cancel culture. You think as an attorney and a former elected official, you'd understand that city council makes policy decisions. Uh, we do that for the people and city staff works for us. And so I think that you're misplaced there in those comments being directed towards city council. Um, I, I've heard, I've been involved in this issue for over a year. Um, and I've, and longer, obviously I've served on city council for nearly five years. Um, and I've repeatedly heard primarily black or people of color, um, people from our community call in and share pain about what happened on section fourteen and have said that a statue at City Hall makes them feel unwelcome to do the people's business and unwelcome to participate in city government, which belongs to them. You know, the entitlement to then come in and ignore that, um, and then, you know, make these accusations. I'm sorry, I'm offended by Mr. Pacheco's argument. Seems like, um, you know, they, they want to litigate this matter. Um, but it's, um, always been clear to the public. I've actually said many times before this but, you know, even before this, that, um, the statue doesn't match the architecture of the historic building. Um, that is well known in the community, was added much, much later. Um, it is not a historic recite, resource. City Hall is, um, is why we're famous uh, for mid-century modern architecture. Um, and it's just so clear to me. I know that this is a narrow issue about the certificate of appropriateness and that issue is, is one that is so clear, um, that, that, that we can clearly issue. Um, this is about a statue on City Hall and, you know, city council can obviously decide what to do with city property and we've, we followed the law. So, um, I just am a little hurt by the comments continually to ignore the pain that our fellow neighbors and residents have expressed. Um, and to make this about one person, you know, I don't support statues of any public servant or public servants. We do it for twenty-nine thousand dollars a year, not for a statues erected in our honor. What an honor to have a statue in City Hall for thirty years. I said that last time. Um, no one is entitled to a statue in front of City Hall. Um, I just want to make sure that, I'm so sorry that I know I'm going broader than this, than this issue, um, at hand. Um, but I just wanted to respond to the public comment that, um, that we heard tonight and Mr. Pacheco's allegations that this is about council culture and political correctness. No, sir. This is about the residents that I heard who said that they feel unwelcome on city property because of a statue because of what that council and the city did at the time, not about one man, or we've heard those complaints too. So, um, I just wanted, I felt the urge and the need to say that in defense of what we do is represent the people um, and make sure everyone is, feels welcome at City Hall and to do the city's business and to engage in democracy with, which, with us. Um, and so thank you, Madam Mayor, for the, um, ability to, to, to respond. Um, but I fully support, uh, staff's recommendation and the resolution, um, and the motion by council member Coors, not Mr. Coors, I think he was called by Mr. Pacheco. Um, and staff, should we restate those findings, uh, for the record? Or do you think they're adequately cited, uh, by council member Coors's, uh, motion?
Um, I, I think they're adequately stated. If, if, uh, I could just clarify for the record that his motion is based on the findings that are contained in both the staff report and the resolution.
Thank you. Can I read them just, um, to be thorough? In case litigation comes from this, um, that the proposed alter, the findings in support of the decision, uh, that the proposed alteration does not significantly impact or materially impair the character defining features of the historic resource as listed in the resolution for historic designation or where a character defining feature may be impacted. The proposed alteration minimizes that impact as much as possible. That the proposed alteration will assist in restoring the historic resource to its original appearance where applicable or substantially aid in its preservation or enhancement as a historic resource. Um, that any additions to the historic resource are consistent with amassing proportions, materials and finishes of the existing historic resource. Um, and continued through, uh, finding number three, um, and, and the Palm Springs Municipal Code and the certificate of appropriateness. And I think that's the only one I need to read out loud. Is that correct, city staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from council? Uh, roll call, please.
Council member Coors.
Yes.
Council member Holstich.
Yes.
Council member Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right. We will now move on to, uh, item five D, which is a revised city council rules of procedure. I'd like to ask for a staff report.
Uh, Madam Mayor, in city council, for your consideration of revisions to the city council's rules of procedure, based on the city council's direction, the revisions seek to formalize the process for council members to request that a matter be agendized for a future meeting. Ensure that important topics are considered earlier in the meeting. Utilize gender neutral terms. Uh, the staff report outlines each of the significant proposed changes and if desired, I can pull up the report to review in more detail and I'm available for questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Mejia? Well, I have one, Anthony. Uh, after reading all of this work, uh, we're gonna miss you an awful lot. So, uh, do you take, uh, evening phone calls and?
Often.
All right. Um, it's been a long night, but, uh, are there? And this is an extremely well-written report, but, uh, let me ask you again, are there any questions for, uh, staff? I see none. Uh, okay. Council member Holstich.
I think council member Coors was first. I just had a question. Um, it talks about placement of items on meeting agendas. Um, and so one, it says the city manager is responsible for scheduling agenda items for city council meetings. I thought that the uh, city rules allowed for the mayor and the city manager to work in partnership or for council and the mayor to and, um, the city manager to work in partnership to set the agenda. So is this a departure from what we typically do and what might be stated in our charter or other ordinances? Or this is our current practice? City manager, city attorney or city clerk?
So I, I would certainly defer to Mr. Ballinger on any legal issues and compliance or conformance with the charter. But I think the combination of the first two ways cited in the rules of procedure for things to be added to the agenda certainly do contemplate the collaboration you're talking about, although it does not seem to empower directly collaboration between any one member of the council and the city manager. Just bear in mind too, that while almost every meeting, and here in a minute we'll do it, um, look at future meeting agendas and, and collaborate that way. There are many, many more routine items that come by way through the departments and the city manager's office for the kinds of things that, um, you know, aren't public policy oriented, right? That might be contracts that need approval or just other things that are generally not discussed or collaborated on. So that's kind of the bulk of items that would be introduced by the city manager. Alternatively, or additionally, I should say, there's this collaboration that does occur between the full council body and, and, um, really among itself to agendize any other items. So that's really, I think, where the collaboration comes in. But, Mr. Ballinger?
Yeah, the charter, uh, in our municipal code does, uh, they do not provide the mayor any, uh, additional authority to add agenda items. The Brown Act sort of does in the sense that it allows a mayor to call a special meeting and that kind of inherently allows a mayor to um, add those items to the special meeting, but as far as regular meetings, um, the mayor is in the same position as other council members.
Thank you. That's helpful. I just don't want the, I think that, um, council plays an important role in agenda setting and I, maybe that's a number two, um, you know, but I just don't want to give full authority for agenda setting to the city manager in the future. You know, imagine if someone were stonewalling and not allowing it, but I think that, not you. You're, you know, a successor in thirty years or whatever it is. So, um, but maybe number two adequately addresses that. Is that right?
That's right. It's the combination of those two things that really kind of complete the full circle that. And, and frankly, if there was any tension, say, between a city manager and a council, number two also doesn't require the collaboration of the city manager. So the council can agendize anything it wants. Uh, the city manager can presumably do the same thing. But really it is the interaction of those two and as we look through things like future agendas where there is, it is kind of collaboration, but again, neither can really veto the other, um, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that's helpful. I think that, then that makes a lot of sense that there's a city manager element, is the CEO of the city or the, um, manager and then the city council ability to do that. And then I just had a question about number three. Um, if you could just explain how that would work in practice to the public and the council and in a way that it would be consistent with the Brown Act, because I think right now all of us avoid talking to each other about any issue at all, um, to avoid a Brown Act violation. And, um, I'm just a little confused about what outside of a meeting, if only there's a need to take immediate action that precludes the use of the other two options, a council member may sponsor and see two cosponsors to add to an agenda to the item. So that's new to us. We're not used to finding two sponsors for anything ahead of a meeting. I'm a little worried it might invite Brown Act violations.
Sure. So let me first describe it so that everyone knows what we're talking about. We can ask Mr. Ballinger to elaborate on Brown Act issues and then we might even discuss processes that will insulate that, um, from Brown Act vulnerability. So as we described, um, one way things get on the agenda is just through the city manager. The other is through action of the council at a council meeting. The significant disadvantage in that process is the council meets twice per month. That's generally adequate for typical policy discussions that you can say sometime in the next month or even at the next meeting, we'd like to consider an item. On occasion though, there might be things that are very timely where a council member has not afforded the opportunity to confer with the rest of the council at a regular meeting. When that happens, the only way that council member could get something agendized is to ask the city manager. When that happens, the only way that council member could get something agendized is to ask the city manager. Usually that works, especially for any regular run-of-the-mill agenda item. But just as you described, maybe not me, but with a successor or maybe a different council, if there were ever tension there, could presumably put a city manager in the middle, especially if it were an issue where a council was already known to be divided. So a council member comes and says, I don't have time to to bring this up at the next meeting because maybe there's a grant deadline, or there's something else that's really precludes it from being discussed by the full body at the next regular meeting. So the only thing they can do is approach the manager. This third way to get something agendized is meant to alleviate putting the manager in the middle, right? So it enables a council member to to put something on the agenda with two supporting sponsors, which is the same majority vote that would be required during a regular business meeting, except it occurs outside that meeting. That should not involve any discussion of how the matter should be voted. In fact, many bodies elect to put things on an agenda so that they're heard and that there's kind of a procedural matter. But but really, that doesn't even convey they support voting in favor or against the matter, right? So I think Mr. Bounder can weigh in on the Brown Act, but if that conversation is limited to simply saying, yes, this item should be scheduled, or no, it shouldn't, that it's not a Brown Act violation. And if we want to preserve that and make sure that there isn't further discussion on the merits of the item, we could create some processes to do that. That would probably mean a council member submits a form and and seeks a sponsorship without discussion, but just through a static description of the item meant to be discussed or something like that. Mr. Bounder?
I I would agree. I think this is very much the exception to the rule for most situations. And just like I mentioned, the mayor is allowed to call a special meeting and add an agenda item to that special meeting. The Brown Act also allows three members of a council to call a special meeting. And that necessarily involves some limited discussion about whether or not to add that agenda item or call that meeting. And and so I think the Brown Act supports this limited discussion of whether or not to add an agenda item without getting into the merits of it.
Thank you.
Are there, are there questions or comments? Councilmember Course.
Great. Thank you. That covered, I was gonna ask. And I I just had a little of the same similar concern on just the language about the same manager sort of controls the agenda. There's a lot that obviously there's time constraints and things along those lines. And maybe there's just a way, maybe it's three members of the council can put something on, but also can prioritize timing, right? I think that's, that was the issue to me, right? We don't want, if the majority of council wants something on at the next meeting. We should be able to do that, call much as that we wanted on a future agenda. So maybe that. And I know we we are gonna do regular updates and we look at the, you know, we have time to give input. But just maybe to clarify that unless everyone thinks that's clear enough. That that was my concern.
I think neither provision really speak to the timing, but the fact that both provisions allow either the city manager or council to put something on the agenda. If that action contemplated timing, so if council said, I'd like to place on the next agenda, this item, it would be on the next agenda.
Okay. Great. That was my only question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor Pro Tim Garner.
Just have a comment. I wanted to just point out, this is section six at the bottom of page two. About presentations, proclamations and recognitions. I wanted to highlight this mostly for the public because we are looking at limiting the number of presentations that we do at our city council meetings. And prioritizing doing proclamations and such at the events that we're hosting. And this is a big change because I think as the the our residents know, we tend to do a pretty long intro to our meetings. And part of this change is to have more time to really discuss the people's business. And so as important as recognitions are, we want to be able to really get into the meat of the issues and not have conversations super late into the evening. So I I really support that, and I think that there are other ways for us to highlight things. For instance, if a proclamation is given at a particular event, you know, we could put the recording of that reading on channel seventeen. We've talked before about ways to better utilize channel seventeen. So I don't want anyone to feel like if their proclamation or if their presentation wasn't done at City Hall, that it is not as important. It's about making sure that we have time to to get to the business and that there are lots of ways that we can make sure that our residents are recognized and that we rotate what comes in each year. So, thank you.
Right. Question for staff. This is a resolution. If we were to find that there's a section or in here that is not working. Define what the process would be for council to revise that 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 section.
Certainly. So the city council could direct stop to bring forward any amendments to the rules of procedure. The council could take action at that meeting, and those rules would be effective immediately.
So we're talking about something that at that could happen as quickly as two meetings, one to identify that we need to look revisit revisit a procedure and then a second meeting to actually enact that revision.
Absolutely.
All right. So, you know, I think that's a really important matter as we're looking at something like this. We've got an, it's always hard to get this perfect if we find we've made a mistake. This is not the constitution that we're trying to change. Other comments? Then is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Also.
There's no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Pro Tim Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Course.
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods. I'm sorry. Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Right. And at ten oh two PM, we have gotten to the ten o'clock hour when we take public comment on non-agenda items. Mr.
We have no public comment for this evening, Madam Mayor.
We have none. Okay, then we are to city council member and city manager requests an upcoming agenda development.
Mayor, if it's your pleasure and the pleasure of the council, I'm happy to share my screen and put up the future meetings document that we've been reviewing. So speaking of collaborating on the agenda, here we go. Is everybody seeing the right screen? Let me try this. Okay, I never know which side to put it on. Okay, so what you'll see is really March tenth has a number of heavier items. And so more than likely, some of these will already need to move until March twenty fourth. We do have an appeal, some general plan related business. We also need to finish up our CDBG that we started this evening. And then it is also timely that we make progress on the franchise agreement in thirteen eighty-three compliance. So we're gonna need to change this a little bit, and right now, March twenty-fourth looks like there is plenty of space. We have a study session available. One of the other things that staff is really waiting for is to schedule a follow-up meeting with College of the Desert to fulfill the the discussion that was planned, but we weren't able to complete previously. So pending that, we also have in mind to do a review of short-term rental programming that could take place on a March study session. But again, we're, that's kind of pending, scheduling something with the College of the Desert, which right now is, I believe, the priority of council. So lots will still change by the end of March, as it often does. As we also confer with staff on new items or items that aren't quite ready for the tenth. But these are the items to look forward to in the next couple of meetings, and we are open to any feedback.
I can't see everyone, so.
I have something.
Yes, councilmember Garner, or Mayor Pro Tim Garner, excuse me.
No worries. Thank you. Just to to kind of kick us off, the general plan, vision and priorities discussion. I would support moving that to March twenty-fourth. I would, I I really would like for us to have a robust discussion on that. And I think it would make sense to to move it. And I also support that March study session being about vacation rentals. I I understand the the potential conflict there, but I think to to the extent that it's possible, I would like that. So I don't know if there are any others in support of those two options.
Respectfully, Mayor Pro Tim Garner on vacation rentals. I I think we need some more study work before we would be able to move that that quickly to it. I I appreciate the urgency, but I know there's a lot of data I want to get that we've just not been collecting. Councilmember Course.
Sure. I would support that because I think we need to decide what we want to look at. So staff's not getting data on everything. But what are the issues that we want to deal with, especially around the impacts on housing? And I think that's how it was sort of in our work plan, right, that it was set for this month. When we, on our study session two days ago, it's gonna be, happen in March if possible. So we could give direction to staff so they have time to bring back any changes with the data to to council down the road. And I think they thought they need several months to do that. So I think the idea was to limit what kind of data they needed to to get based on the input from the community and then from council.
Yeah, and the other thing I might just mention there is oftentimes, even when we might consider in a vacuum, what kind of data we want to look at. Once you start looking at the data, it often raises more questions. And and so we do, we've been collecting some data and really working to make sure that it's somewhat comprehensive, at least from what we have available. So if this agenda items moves forward, we think we'd have a lot to review. And then in the event that you want more data, especially that we haven't already been collecting, that would especially be the time where we might need a little bit of time to to go and look for those numbers or even start new measurements that that we don't have in place currently.
Fair enough. Are there questions or comments? Councilmember Woods.
Just that, you know. Is sixty minutes enough for the general plan or does that need to be a study session? I mean, that's, you know, that's a big issue, and I know we're updating just certain elements of the general plan. But you know, like bus stops came up tonight, and that could be a twenty-minute conversation unto itself. And I'm just wondering if sixty minutes is going to be enough. I know it's just priorities. But I just wanted to, yeah, that meeting seems very packed with very important issues. That's why, and I'm sorry. I agree with the mayor Pro Tim.
So so let me just share my screen one more time. I do think these are good points. And just take note that we actually have a number of general plan components scheduled for conversation. So we have the housing element, which is a conversation we've had a few times, which may or may not be ready as we are also working with state for approval. Then we also have the general plan, vision and priorities discussion, which I think is also meant to be iterative, similar to the housing element. But really, when you take those two together, it it's possible that that could be an appropriate topic for a work session and give us a little more time to really explore those. I think either way, especially the plan, the vision and priorities discussion is one that would be iterative. So similar to short-term rentals or lots of big conversations, we'd probably only get so far in an initial conversation. And then would have to do either some drafting or some follow-up research or some other things before we were ready for a second conversation. So I'm happy to take notes from council on that and also to confer with Deputy City Manager Fag, who's on the call and can weigh in as well.
Just to speak to that, I think a study session would be more than appropriate. That gives us a little bit more flexibility in terms of the discussion with council. As the city manager has indicated, you've already seen the vision and priorities. We have done additional outreach since you last saw it, have made some modifications there and discussed those with the Planning Commission. Keep in mind that this is a small portion of some of the other changes you'll be seeing relative to the general plan. And the discussion of bus stops and other things will come as we get into detail of the circulation element and also land use element points, which will be further down the line in terms of our discussion. So I I do believe vision and priorities could be done in about an hour and might be appropriate in a study session rather than a regular meeting of city council. But we're happy to take the direction of city council in terms of how you would like us to bring that forward to you.
I'm I'm open. I just don't know how in-depth my fellow council members might want to go into it. So I'm pretty briefed on it, but I'll I'll leave it up to them to decide.
And if I could just briefly, one other thing to consider is that we're going to be moving into the budget process pretty soon. And instead of trying to do that really as a component piece of regular meetings, which works for kind of a carryover budget like we did last year or the current fiscal year, but especially with the volume of requests that we might have associated with new priorities and a real review of the CIP, we contemplate using two study sessions to discuss budget likely in April and May. So just think about the 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 broader picture with the calendar. If we don't review short-term rentals and elect instead to maybe look at general plan components, it it might raise the question when we can catch up with short-term rentals, which we also think is is kind of of the size worthy of a study session.
Mayor Pro Tim Garner.
Thank you. I I'm mostly interested in just having that discussion fresh. And so making sure that it's at the top of the meeting. I I agree with Flynn. I don't think it would necessarily take too long. Definitely an hour or maybe a little bit more, but I'd prefer a study session to be on something else as long as that general plan session could be at the top of an agenda. But I also wanted to ask about councilmember Holstich's comments at the top of the meeting and find out what the timing was for that potential budget allocation and what that would take.
Is that a question for me? Yes. Yeah, and just to be clear, so I'm asking for this to come forward earlier because there are, there are a few weeks out. The state is a few weeks out from publishing initial guidance guidance and regulations about allocating the thirty-five million dollars in state funds to communities. And so we'll have more information then. But I did get sort of an urgent request from Clearworks and DAP Health to fund the initial part of that pilot program and to do the work to secure state funding, philanthropy dollars, other funding to build out a true pilot program. Does that answer your question, or what was your specific question? Or you want me to give background, detailed background?
No, I don't need detailed background. I'm just more interested in the timing on what agenda this would be on if if there's support for it.
Yeah, thank you. So I think, councilmember Course, did you want to answer?
No, I'm just gonna say from discussion that we had with DAP is if we could do it the second meeting in March, because if we support it, you know, they have to invest and do a bunch of stuff. If we don't, it sort of ends it. And so they're not spending a lot of resources unless they know that we're we're there. So if we can do that, the second, the second meeting, whether, you know, we want to provide some initial funding, it's not a staff work. You know, the organizations do the work, and that's why it needs an organization to do this. But I think it's gonna be thirty-five million dollar grants. I don't know if the states changed that, but I thought that was the original plan. And so they, you know, they have to invest in doing the startup work so they can be in the best position to get those, that grant that's needed to do the program.
Thank you. I'm I'm supportive of that.
Isn't I?
Are there any other comments or questions? Mr. Mr. Clifton, with the lifting of the COVID restrictions, will we be returning to chambers on March ten?
At the pleasure of council, we certainly can.
It's my desire that we return to chambers.
I I think the only thing we might need to check on is we are still subject to I think the only thing we might need to check on is we are still subject to state law and OSHA. And OSHA in particular may require masks depending on the setup of council chambers. We'd have to look at that one issue. But, but otherwise, I think the door is open to return to in person.
Councilmember Corzus?
I support that as well. If, if it's the setup, that's a concern under OSHA because I think we all don't want to wear masks so the public can see us. You know, one option might be, I know some places have used plexiglass. I don't know if that would solve OSHA's issue. And then on the mayor's coalition, a lot of cities have gone to the convention centers or ballrooms or places where people could be more spread out. So if we can't do it in chambers, my preference would be then maybe to do it at the convention center rather than not do it in person, if that makes sense.
One thing to just bear in mind, I did check with the convention center. The good news is that our tourist economy is strong and they're busy. They likely do not have space for us on any of our regular meetings until at least May.
There's some large hotel ballrooms that might donate them to the city as well. So if you get to try and do it in person and if there's an OSHA way we can do it, that would be great.
And I'm happy to look into that.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to the city manager following up in that area?
And one more thing to clarify, I think our intent when we started talking about going back in person initially is that we're really talking about council for now. At some point, it may be appropriate to open the chambers to members of the public. But I also think our direction was to try to maintain the hybrid setting so that we could both accommodate residents who want to continue to have the convenience of weighing in at home and so that we can accommodate when council members are traveling or other things and need to zoom into a meeting. So I think even when we return to chambers, we will maintain the hybrid options to accommodate both council members and members of the public.
Yeah, that additional flexibility is going to come in handy from time to time. Is there anything else, council this evening? All right. Again, this was a long evening, a lot of difficult conversation. All of it done respectfully and I thank all of the people of Palm Springs. This adjourns our meeting. We adjourn in the honor of Charles Dunn. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on March 10, 2022 at 5:30 PM. Stay safe, everyone.